Okay, all right. All right, welcome everyone. It is January 21st, 2022. It is four o'clock and this is the town of Dewey Beach. We've just finished the executive session. It's a public hearing, monthly town commissioner meeting. We first order of business is to close out our executive session. So can I have a motion to close executive session?
Awesome move.
By Stevens and second by Commissioner Persinger. Thank you very much. All right, we will reconvene.
401.
So we reconvene, stuff with glasses and these masks. We'll reconvene our regular town meeting from an opening ceremony standpoint. If we can stand through the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands so nations under God, the justice for all. Thank you, everyone. From a roll call perspective, I'll ask for, to my right, David to start.
David Jusinski.
Elizabeth Givens.
Bill Stevens, Fred Townsend, Townspeople.
Bill Zolper, Town Manager.
And on the, on the video feed.
Gary Persinger.
Paul Bauer.
Okay. One full and in town in here and we also have Ashley Sanders, Kate Banazak, Sheena Hall and Dawn Hinks and a, and a guest. All right. Updates and announcements. Verizon Wireless Processing Portal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the work of Jim Deedee's and our new CTC rep, James Crane, and with Kate, we have the new portal up and running on the town website. The way the process works is they come in, they fill out the application in person, they pay the processing fee. We give them a link to the portal, then they go in. Jim, did I miss anything on that?
No, sir.
Currently, I've sent two emails to Verizon to find out what their status is on moving the polls. I got a response back about an hour ago from Verizon. You have to do portal up. Okay. From Verizon and they said they are looking at the location reference, the settlement agreements that they had with Mr. Pyers. They expect work to be completed in the next few weeks.
Completed.
Completed and then they will be in the position to survey, prepare and file permit applications.
It's like, so completed in terms of the review of the potential spot and then it'll go back through our ordinance to make sure.
They have to go through our ordinance.
Yep. Any questions on that commissioners? I don't see any hands. Okay. Updates now at second, climate change committee.
Yeah, I think we were very fortunate because we got what I think is kind of an extraordinary response. The town sent out an email asking people to volunteer to be part of this committee. We've actually are having to turn down unfortunately a number of people. We will have later in the agenda, we have a list of seven people, I believe, for approval by the, by the commissioners. I, you know, I think this is potentially an important committee. I think there are a lot of interrelationships with other committees, not the least of which is the infrastructure committee. Charter and code may have a role here. I think there's some connections also in terms of what this group does to the town's FEMA communities, community rating with respect to flood insurance. So, you know, I think it's going to be a very interesting committee and, you know, hopefully commissioners will, will agree to approve membership of the committee later on the agenda today.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bersiger.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to, unless there's any questions for Commissioner Bersiger on that. All right, let's move on to committee reports. Gary, since you have a, can you go through your committees, the audit, starting with audit?
Sure. The audit committee has, has solicited proposals for a new auditor. They are meeting on the 26th to review proposals, which I believe has turned out to be singular proposal. And so the process is going well, I think. You know, we'll, we'll see what their deliberations turn out. Hopefully we'll be able to, to move forward very quickly with, with the new auditor. The other committee I will mention is, is the Charter and Code Review Committee. They will be meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM. We have a chair and fully staffed membership and the committee, I think the first order of business is really to decide what their direction is going to be. You know, one of the options they have is to build on the work that was done and unfortunately stopped as of February 2020 because of the pandemic. You know, there's also an opportunity to pursue some of the low hanging fruit that the town particularly Jim Deedee's and Dawn may be able to point them to. Some things that they're aware of that need to be addressed in the code and just need some, some formalization of recommendations back to the commissioners. They may take a completely different tack, but again, this is their first meeting. And, you know, I'm looking forward to a good productive committee. Wonderful. Those are the only updates that I have.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, marketing committee, a lot of good stuff happening, a lot of great ideas. It's a, it's a good team and our last meeting, we went over a couple items. One was discussing both to approve some beach signage. As, as we all know, the, you know, the boxes we put down at the end of every street, they seem to get cluttered, there's stuff that falls off it and, you know, we were talking about making some suggestions to town administration of maybe a good way to clean that up. So, you know, trying to talk about like what content goes in there. I mean, it, it, right now it just gets cluttered with stuff and it's small print and unless you're standing in front of it, you're not going to read it. So really trying to break it down into a monthly list of events, what the beach rules are. You know, doing the post in a, in a way, you know, because they sort of, it's like a light, you know, just plain wood. We talked about bringing in potentially some local artists like Leah Beach and that Delaware artist collaboration. Come up and just give us some ideas of how can we make this look more artsy, more beachy and things like that. So we're, we're going to have some suggestions, but until we get into any cost of anything like that, you know, we'll obviously bring that to the commission. And then also talked about maybe some marketing updates, you know, going out to people. For example, you know, the, the dune mat renewals are coming due this year. Because the, you know, it's actually four years, you know, the first year we got them out after Memorial Day. So we gave a, gave a pass that in first year, but the next three years have now expired as well. So what we did is three year sponsorships are now, you know, everybody's up for renewal. Plus there's some people that wanted to get in and, and this will be a good opportunity for the community to get involved in, and, you know, putting some, you know, some signage up on some of those streets. I think that the whole program as a whole has been a great success and, but we've recognized that there's maintenance involved in these things. And we, you know, we need to, you know, keep these things in tip top shape. And so that's, so that's what we're, you know, talking about is how, how do we communicate better? So those are the two good ideas, you know, and, you know, possibly including an ad is the town manager update, mayor update, commissioners updating commissioners that want to put some sort of update in there. But it's just some, you know, some steady communication and this would be in the form of email as opposed to a mailing. So it wouldn't be a cost to the town, you know, with the exception of putting the email out to everybody. And then last but not least, Ashley and I are working and it sort of ties into the marketing committee, but not necessarily. We're working on some grants to pay for these things. So if we can market the town better from a tourism standpoint and, and, you know, have that funding come from the federal government, that would be, that would be great. So that's all I got right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jusinski.
We'll be having a public hearing and voting on the infrastructure committee's latest work, so nothing redundant.
Okay. Commissioner Givens?
The investment committee did not have appropriate notice, so it's been rescheduled for January 27th.
Okay, all right. And the, from my perspective, the budget committee will also had a conflict and will begin meeting in March this year. But we will be reviewing some of the budget today and as part of our agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, Gary.
In terms of committee reports, I would really like to urge that if you're the liaison for a committee, that you make sure that the committee gets out any supporting materials so that they, you know, anybody who's not in attendance or even people who are in attendance to the public have access to those same supporting materials. I, I think that if the committee is going to discuss a particular document, I think the public is actually required under the FOIA requirement to have access to that document. And I think we have not been as diligent about making those documents available as we really should. So again, I would just like to reinforce that and make sure that everyone has access to those documents.
Okay, thank you, Gary. All right, next is for the approval of the December 2021 monthly town commissioner meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
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 I need to stand since I was not in attendance.
Okay. Right, that motion passes unanimously. Oh, well, I'm sorry, that motion for those that are.
4-0.
Absolutely. So next topic, next part of our agenda is public comment. So I'll ask, Kate, is there anybody in the waiting room for a public comment?
All their reading?
Okay.
There is a fourth person.
I'm not really expecting anybody, so. Yes, why don't we bring them in for a public comment? John, can you hear us? Just always the painful part. For those that are coming in, if you can hear me, please remember to turn off your posts, your Facebook or YouTube. John, are you there? Oh, here's not. All right, so let's remove him from the room and add the next person.
The other individuals are with Remington and Burnick, they're, they're there to talk about.
Oh, they are all part of Remington?
These two are Matt and Kevin.
Okay. And who's the Steven Spence?
He's there on the ordinance, I'm sure.
Okay, why don't we bring Steven Spence in then?
Well, we're going to have a public hearing too on that.
And then.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Anyone here would like to get up for public comment? Please state your name.
I was, I just got a text that my dad's got an electrical fire in his house since I was getting up to stand, so I'll be stepping out, it's all fine. I'm just speaking for the Dewey Business Partnership to let everybody know, I believe they already know by now, the Dewey Winter Gala has been changed from January 29th to February 26th. We currently have little about 500 tickets sold. We had about 80 people get refunds that couldn't make it. We've had about 95 people buy tickets since then. So the sellout is 650, 700 people. So we will sell out, the gala will be a success. And one thing, just the reason we're all wearing these right now and everything is to support our local hospitals. We know that, speaking with the governor, the numbers have come down drastically in the last six, seven days, which is a great sign. That's what they thought would happen. So we feel very confident by February, we won't be wearing these because the word he won't commit to, but he said one month. And I was just in Utah yesterday and Utah was one month of February 8th. It seems like everybody's kind of on this one month track, at least we'll hope that stays on track. But we're going to give a stack of tickets to Dr. Tam at BB to award to somebody that's hard at work in nurses and doctors that would appreciate something like the Dewey Gala, because we all know they've been burning the candles at every end, taking care of our community. So we thought that'd be a nice story and thing to do and story for Dewey Beach as well. That's it.
Thank you, Monte. All right. With that, we'll close out the public comment and open up for the public, the public hearing. And the first item on the agenda from the public hearing side is a public hearing on a resolution regarding the usage of infrastructure funds and the amounts up to $478,000 to renew and address the pipe issues on Bayard Avenue and McKinley Avenue. Then we will open that up for the public. So an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the infrastructure committee met on December 1st of this year and the results of that, based on my recommendations and them accepting my recommendations and after a lot of conversation was there were two locations that needed to be addressed. One was on McKinley Street and the other was on the east side of Bayard Avenue. If you remember, we did the west side of Bayard Avenue in the past. This would be on the east side of Bayard Avenue. Worst case scenario was $478,000 if they had to replace all the piping. And that would also include on McKinley Street from Route 1 all the way to the bay, the outfall on that, which would have to go across that marshland and Denrec would have to give us the approval for that. But the worst case scenario by the engineers during that meeting was $478,000. So it was decided by the committee to go ahead and say up to that amount, whereas it could come in less. So that's how we, we got where we are today. And representatives from Remington and Burnick and Standard Pipe are available to answer any questions or to discuss the $478,000 estimated cost.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out from our financial statements, I believe that we have already, we'd spent about $211,000, if I remember correctly, on the pipe that was on Reed Street.
It was a little bit over, I think it was closer to $220,000.
Okay. So yeah, if we can have just a conversation, obviously there's, I'll say from my own perspective, it's a very large number, 478,000, as we only have currently.
656, 657.
Yes. $657,000 in that, in that account, in that fund. So I'll open it up for discussion.
So one question I have, because there's been so many different proposals and whatnot, it's kind of hard to keep track. There's, there's one of the pipes is a variable amount and Bill Zolper, you might, you might know, or I think it's our representative from Remington and Burnick could outline, which, which, which is the pipe that has the variable cost, whether it might need a complete rebuild or a reline? And how much is the minimum and maximum for that one piece where we don't really know the cost?
Yes, it should be on McKinley Street, but I think Kevin could actually enter the, the amounts that are possibly the expense that would take place during that time. Kevin?
Yes, I, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Kevin of Remington and Burnick. Bill, all right, Bill, I don't know if I have the capability to share my screen, if that's an option.
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay, great. If you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen, folks. Can everybody see this map here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I actually can see it on your monitor through my monitor, so I know you can. But anyway, this, the areas in question, just to kind of recap and bring everybody up to speed. Right here you have, this is the Baird Avenue area and if, if you can see this, zoom in a little bit here. The color coding on this legend from our initial pilot area evaluation and then, and then dovetailing off of the project that's already been completed to date. We evaluated the light blue is areas that totally need to be excavated and replaced. They're, they're either crumbling, degrading or totally filled. And it was not economical for the town to go ahead and try to reline that. Phase one, this, this magenta or purple area, that is actually, most of that has already been done, completed under that first line item that you had mentioned just now. The beige area here is the area that, that is in question now. Then you're going to see a brownish area, a yellow area, and the brownish area is, was accessible, but heavy cleaning still needed because of flooding and de-watering that was needed. We were not able to totally clean those areas at the time. Yellow is no action needed at this time. Gray was not accessible at all. So just keep those colors in mind if you will. So this is the Reed Street area, which was already talked about, and that has already been completed from Coastal Highway down to the bay. Actually, this area here at the three outfalls was already constructed, but does need to be addressed again, and that's another line item. The McKinley Street area that is the heavy area in question, as you can see, from structure 30 to structure 59 and the red is the outfall, this is at the bayside. This was totally inaccessible. It's in the marsh area, as everybody I'm sure knows. This, this we estimated to be a total remove and replace. The brown area was accessible, but heavy cleaning needed, and we'll dovetail back to that in a minute. This, we're from structure 29 to 30, still needs to be cleaned, but we, we were able to, to have some limited accessibility. From 27 to 28 and to 31 on the opposite side of McKinley, also in the same state. And Bill, if you recall, right about this area here, if you can see where my mouse is kind of moving, there's a pipe or an outfall that just goes across of Hayden that exits here into that same marsh area. So we believe these are two parallel systems draining with either inaccessible or accessible, but still heavy cleaning needed to be done. We were not able to ascertain the pipe from, coming from 26 on McKinley. We believe this actually runs from a structure 26 on Coastal Highway to 29. Jim Tyler was able to provide me some asbills. Unfortunately, the asbills were all on the Coastal Highway, not much going from Coastal Highway to the bay. So we were not able to quantify that, but we believe that these are parallel drainage systems from 26 to 59. And then again, from 27 through 31 to an outfall that's somewhere here. We believe this is where your heavy expense will be. Getting up to Baird, again, phase two, recommended to be relined in the next phase, which is where we are. We believe that the structure 13 through 66, which parallel 65, is still a candidate for relining. It has already been cleaned and documented. Also down here on Coastal Highway from structure 32 through 52 also has been cleaned and televised and is a candidate for relining. So the $478,000 that we're discussing with the infrastructure committee was to encumber as if we were going to replace all of 32 to 52 on Coastal Highway, all of 26 to 59 and the structures on McKinley, which is probably the biggest unknown and, and Denrec permitting required. And then to reconstruct and replace all of 13 through 66 here on Bayer. Of that figure, and, and Bill just brought this up and we discussed this with Jim as well. We feel that instead of the reconstructed reconstruction cost, what I call reconstruction or remove and replace, which includes the excavation, we believe the relining cost for this area here is, 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 is very doable, as is the area here from 32 to 52 on Coastal Highway. And we also believe a portion of McKinley is a candidate for potential relining. However, we would, we, we feel it would be in the town's best interest to keep the 26 through 59 or all of McKinley as a reconstruction estimate, because we feel the most unknown is here and the accessibility issue, especially from 30 to 59, would be a candidate to at least allocate or encumber a reconstruction cost to, to improve these drainage structures on McKinley. But we do have a provision in there to complete the cleaning and televising. And if a portion of this is a candidate for relining, that we would entertain that. But right now, Bayer and the Coastal Highway area here is a, is a very good candidate for relining. We feel much better than probably in a 60, 70 to 80 range, where it's probably 50, 50 or less along the McKinley. So although we encumbered the 478 to do a total reconstruct for all three areas in question, we feel area, Bayer area and the Coastal Highway area here would be good relining candidates. Still keeping the reconstruction costs or McKinley in place would bring that cost down from that 478. And that's just to give everybody a quick overview of what was discussed at the infrastructure committee meeting.
It's not, if I may ask you a quick question. Can you give me, gave us the estimate, you know, 478 obviously is a very, is a large number?
It is.
Can you separate that out between Bayer and McKinley in terms of the amounts? And I don't know if I heard that. And also on the proposal that you put forth, what is the $69,800 in addition to that 478?
That would be for, if we were to do reconstruction for all of the three areas, that would be for construction plans, design and plans, remove and replace, inspection services and any permitting needed. So those would be the engineering fees that to perform the reconstruction would include a field survey, more than just the asset locations that were completed to identify and locate those assets. It would be for full field survey, engineering design plans, permitting and inspection fees for all three sites, if you were going to remove or replace all of it. Obviously, if the governing body wanted to just do a part of or a section, that would be modified, but that was an all inclusive number for those, those fees or for those services, excuse me.
So I think, I think what the question was then is what you're looking for is if we're just focusing on locations two and three, where you, those are the locations where you have more certainty, correct?
Yes, so what, what, what we'll call, I'll call up here, if everybody can still see my screen, I'm calling you the Baird Avenue. We'll call that section one. And let's call Coastal Highway here section two and we'll leave McKinley by itself at section three. So yes, sir, if you're talking about sections one Baird and section two Coastal Highway, those were, were, we're probably 80 to 90% confident that those are good candidates for relining. I have Matt Zanucki from SPS on the line as well, which would certainly, my estimate of the 478 was total reconstruct for everything. But one and two would be excellent candidates for relining, which, which of course would not require only inspection fees, no survey, no engineering fees as far as doing a, a full blown design. So that, that 699 could come down as well as the construction costs, then, then that would be sort of replaced with their relining costs, which are, which are much, much cheaper than, than obviously a removal and replace.
So do you, do you have now for those two sections, what, don't worry about the 69, but the, the relining costs of the project, what that would entail if we're able to do a reline on those two?
So with that, Matt, if you wouldn't mind, why don't you jump on the call, Matt Zanucki here for SPS Standard Pipe Services?
Hi, everybody.
We, we, we discussed those figures and I'll let him speak if that's okay.
So if we were just to do the Coastal Highway and Baird Avenue, section one and section two, I think we're at about $100,000 or so to perform that effort right there.
And that's, that's assuming that your 80 to 90% confidence pans out. Is that, that's with that assumption, right?
I would say we're, we're about 95% sure on those guys.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Last time we were there, so unless, unless they've collapsed since then. Okay. I don't think they have. I think you, you would have already called an excavation contractor out there. I think you guys were, been, you know, noticed it. So I, I think it's probably going to take me two days to clean all those, those efforts out because I've already been there about a year ago cleaning it and then I can think I can come in there and reline it pretty quickly. Yeah. I think that's about three to four days worth of lining work, maybe five.
Okay. So when you, when you, when you quoted the 478 for everything, because I've read through this a couple of times and it's kind of hard to really dissect it. When you quoted the 478, was that including a reline on these two sections or was that a rebuild on these two sections?
No, the 478, sir, was to rip everything out, sections one, two and three and replace. And the 699 was design, survey and inspection fees and any permits required. So if, obviously if sections one and two, as we're calling them, are. So if, obviously if sections one and two, as we're calling them, are, are, which we, which like Matt said, we're about ninety-five, and I'm sorry, Matt, but we're ninety-five percent certain, uh, that, that, because they've been televised, they've been cleaned. We'd have to do some probably touch up, and we've had done a site visit, uh, on the, on the first, when we had the Infrastructure Committee meeting. The four seventy-eight was to remove and replace everything.
Okay, so if we.
We could then start candidates to reline and not have to do all of that extensive other work.
So, um, just looking at McKinley, which is the one that most likely needs a rebuild. What, what is the cost to figure out the answer of it indeed needs a rebuild?
Uh, let me jump in, Kevin, for this one, just because I was talking about this before the start. Uh, on McKinley, um, since I'm going to come up and I have to clean out Baird, uh, and I have to clean out Coastal Highway again already, I mentioned to him that, hey, why don't you give me like a day to look at thirty-one through twenty-seven to see if I can clean it? You know what I mean? To see if I'm pretty confident that I can actually clean that out and reline it. And if I, if that goes well, then let me look at thirty through twenty-six and see if I can do the same thing there. And if that turns out well, then let me see if I could do fifty-nine to thirty.
So question for you, just because everything eventually flows to the bay. As a layperson doesn't really understand this, I wouldn't think it makes sense to do McKinley Street unless you do it all the way to the bay, just because the water has to flow all the way to the end of the pipe. Is that a fair statement or am I not understanding?
No, that, that, that is a fair statement, and we're confident it's not flowing at all now, so. Uh, as you saw for the minutes of the, uh, Infrastructure Committee meeting, um, just, just opening them back up and, and doing nothing else will improve that situation by virtue of the fact there's nothing flowing through them now. So what, 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 I guess, long story short, um, the four seventy-eight was to remove and replace everything and full engineering and surveying fees. We feel one and two are, can be relined, so those would be non-reconstructed, uh, areas off the table. Then I would like to allocate or encumber the, the fees needed to remove and replace all of McKinley. To, to be sure that if that is the worst case, and we agree that is, then, then we, we actually have that covered. You're probably looking at about two hundred and fifty-three thousand of the four seventy, uh, of the four seventy-eight to do McKinley from twenty-six to fifty-nine. However, Matt just expressed, and we were talking about this earlier this week, Bill, that, typically they'll go to the low end or the, or the outfall, which would be at fifty-nine and go upstream, as we call it. Uh, that's typically how they operate and, and which was very difficult on McKinley, as everybody knows the terrain and the lay of the land there. Uh, instead, look at doing twenty-six toward the bay, and we feel twenty-six connects to twenty-nine, uh, and, and we would like to confirm that. But, um, he said, if, if, if it'll take him a day to go and investigate and clean both twenty-six through thirty and potentially twenty-seven through thirty-one and to that outfall, which is right across that Hayden. If that's, if that is, uh, if that proves to be, uh, a relining candidate, because again, they were accessible, but heavy cleaning still needed, and they are candidates for relining, that two fifty-three comes down even more to where we might only have to deal with reconstruction of this run, I'll call it, we'll call twenty-nine to fifty-nine. Or maybe not at all, but I would like to encumber the money as if it's a worst case and not need it than to need it, not have it, if that makes sense.
So I, I want to ask you kind of a hypothetical, and if it's too much for you to do during this meeting, just say so. So if we wanted to, if we wanted today, say, go ahead and do the Baird Avenue and the SR one and do the preliminary work on McKinley for you to, uh, develop an understanding of exactly what McKinley's going to cost, um, what's the total nut between your engineering design fees and your preliminary work on McKinley?
Currently, um, Kevin, um, I worked out a price for, you know, the relining on both Coastal and Bay Avenue. And then I said to Kevin, I said, well, I know you guys like to have an idea of like how much it'll cost to perform the excavation replacement on, on these line segments. So I didn't work it out on how much it would be in an inspect McKinley. I just said to Kevin, I said, listen, give me a day out there, you know what I mean? I, I'll confirm it myself if I can do it, then I'm going to go ahead and put my relining costs. If I can't, then I'm going to walk away and I'm not even going to charge you for that day. Now, um, if you just want to do an investigation purposes, um, that might be longer than a day. So, you know, um, we would, we'd have to discuss it a little bit further.
Yeah, I'm, okay. What, what, what I'm trying to get to, guys, is I'm trying to get to something that what's the, what's the nut we need to do these two projects with high certainty and understand how much McKinley Street's ultimately going to cost us? That's what I, that's kind of the, the number I want to understand.
So Matt, it's Matt, the, the relining cost for Baird and Coastal Highway, and then, and then the, the, the several days of investigation for McKinley. Then, then just for, um, just for inspection purposes for Remington or Vernick to be out there with Matt, um, that would probably be whatever he says, we, we would add another, uh, five thousand dollars to that. That would be that number, and then, and then make, then if Matt finds out that, listen, we, we've, we've cleaned out or we can't clean out, we recommend not going any further. Then, then I can work up a, a, a full-blown engineering service and reconstruction fee for McKinley. So Matt, with, with the fee for relining Baird, Coastal and the investigative work, what, what would that number be?
We said, we, like you said, like you said, the hundred and five was for the relining of the two, let's make it a hundred and ten. We'll spend a day or two out there just trying to figure out, you know, everything, you know, you know, get a good grasp on if we can, what we can reline and whatnot.
You're probably looking at, uh, about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five in that range to, to complete what I'll call Baird, Coastal Highway and the analysis for, um, for McKinley as far as what option would be, would be the best? If it's a candidate for relining versus, uh, uh, no, it's a reconstruct and then, um, or, or all that are in part a reconstruct, and then I can work up that figure after, but you're probably in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five.
All right, and just, uh, just to me, I just want to make sure that we're clear, a hundred and twenty-five thousand takes care, takes care of Baird and, and to review of McKinley.
It would take care of Baird up here, it would take coastal here, the beige areas, as I'm calling it, and the investigative work from, from Coastal Highway down to fifty-nine.
Right, so there's no work for the hundred and twenty-five, there's nothing that's going to be done on McKinley at this point in time, other than inspection?
We would probably spend, we would probably spend two days out there, the way I, the way I worked it up in my head, because I think it's technically a hundred and two thousand dollars, I think, to do the relining work. So that gives me eight thousand dollars to go ahead and spend two days out there on McKinley where I can figure out where twenty-six goes, do any cleaning work I can on some of these pipes and see if they are cleanable to, and, and, and re-reline, meaning like, hey, if I find I can clean them, that means I can get my jetting hose all the way through the other end of the pipe. If I get my jetting hose all the way through the end of the pipe, that means I can reline it. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep. So, uh, just since we're in the public comment, is there, is there any other, while we have them here, is there anything else that the commissioners would need from information in order to, when we go into our normal agenda item to, to discuss this? Uh, Gary, Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, the, um, just so I, I'm very, um, clear on this. The, the entire cost of, of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars does not include the engineering fees of sixty-nine eight, is that, that, uh, correct?
Right, we're, uh, generally it's about fifty percent of the total construction cost or, or if you required sur- survey, engineering, inspection and, um, and permits.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
I said.
They're just, they're just two figures in the proposal. One is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, the other is sixty-nine eight. So the, the four, the sixty-nine eight is not part of the four seventy-eight, is that right?
That would be correct.
Okay. So you're really asking us to encumber more than four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars if we were to do the whole thing? Because we'd have to pay the sixty-nine eight as well, which would also have to come from the infrastructure fund.
Uh, yes, I, I, I suppose so. That would be correct, but, uh, again, that was, that was based on, uh, the construction fees and, and we, we, again, at the last committee meeting, we talked about worst case, but we're finding out that two of the three areas, uh, will probably not even need the engineering and surveying that, that was quoted. Uh, so that number would, would potentially come down, and, and our engineering fees would also come down to do, to perform that. But these were all worst-case numbers, uh, to put out in front of the committee for consideration.
Okay, all right.
That, that's, yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and any decision that the commissioners make, is it, is it safe that if there's a decision, for example, to, to invest a hundred and twenty-five thousand into what we've known issues, that the, and the drawings would be an additional fifteen percent? So that if we were to pass an order into, would that be something like, because it was a hundred and twenty-five and you had fifteen percent, that's a hundred and forty-four? Is that a fair statement?
Well, well, the hundred and twenty-five is, is, would include our inspection fees, because that's all we would need uh, to, to, to give you full-time inspection with, um, with, with, in conjunction with SPS. The fifteen percent would be if we're doing full engineering, full survey and full inspection. So it, it's just inspection fees are not fifteen percent, so you would not have to encumber all that. Again, that was worst-case numbers, which was what I was asked to provide.
Okay. We good?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Um, great. Any other public comments in regards to this matter in terms of the usage of infrastructure? Is there anybody, anybody else online? Anyone here in the audience? Not seeing anything, okay. How do we, do we keep them here for the? Should we keep them here for the?
I'd kind of like to hear for our discussion.
Yeah, all right, okay. All right, so the next matter for the public hearing on ordinance to amend chapter one eighty-five zoning to raise the square foot threshold for providing off-street parking from twenty thou- twenty thousand, two thousand square feet to four thousand square feet of patron area of restaurant located in the RB two zoning district. So is there anyone here for public comment? For that matter?
Yes, Steven Spence.
Hey, Mr. Spence, how are you?
I'm fine.
Uh, if you can, please, uh, give us your address as well as, uh, it's, you have the floor for public comments, sir.
Uh, well, when you say public comment, is this part of the public hearing in connection with that proposed ordinance?
It's part of the public hearing, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Steven Spence. I live at, I live at eleven Kings Creek Circle in Rehoboth Beach, Delaware. I'm an attorney admitted to practice in Delaware, and in this case I represent Highway One Limited Partnership and Grotto Pizza Dewey LLC, who both asked me to give public comment in support of the proposed new ordinance to increase the available size of the patron area in a RB district restaurant up to four thousand square feet, uh, without requiring parking. We, uh, we support that, uh, fully as to those clients, and that's, that was the comments I was asked to give.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with, um, with no one, no one else here for the public hearing side of it, help if I put my glasses on. Um, we're going to close the public hearing and move into the agenda, okay? All right, just making sure I'm doing things right, Fred. All right. Uh, first matter on the agenda, discuss and possibly vote to approve a resolution regarding the usage of infrastructure funds and the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand reviewing to address pipe issues on Baird Avenue and McKinley Avenue. So open it up for discussion on the commissioners.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll start. So, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, you've kind of started bringing up different pieces of the cost, and I, I kind of wanted to, and I appreciate Mr. Zalinski and his colleague coming on, because it kind of helped provide a little bit more clarity about how the pricing is done. I, I kind of like want to have, how would I put it, more certainty, um, you know, around the overall price of the project. And when they talked about being able to do two of the projects for a pretty certain price of no more than one twenty-five, and then that'll give us a, a much greater degree of certainty on the third project, which is the largest, most involved one. Um, I, that proposal to me is very intriguing, because it provides us the ability of really understanding how much money we're committing to, um, before we actually kind of authorize the entire project. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are on that.
Commissioner Persinger, Commissioner Bauer.
Yes, Commissioner Persinger. If, if in fact we were to, um, approve the usage of infrastructure funds up to four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, I'm not sure that that would necessarily commit us to pursuing the, the full-scale project. I, I mean, it seems to me that we should be able to approve something here, which would allow us to spend up to that amount of money. Uh, but we could do so in phases, so that there could be some decision points along the way. Once they finish one phase and they have a better assessment of what it would take to address McKinley Street, we could then, I think, make a decision, uh, to go ahead with the rest of the, the spending there. Um, what, what I would like to be able to avoid is a situation where we, we know, we know we have problems, we, we've spent some money to map out where the problems are. Um, you know, we need, we know we need to address them in some way. Let's put on the table a plan that comprehensively addresses those problems, if at all possible. So, you know, again, I would like to be able to do this in some sort of phased approach. Four seventy-eight may not be quite the right figure. It sounds like it's four seventy-eight plus, you know, another sixty-nine thousand dollars. So, um, you know, we, we could, you know, make that kind of commitment as well. I just, I don't want to go back through a public hearing, an infrastructure process, infrastructure committee process, um, another public hearing, uh, to approve additional funds. You know, if we could say, okay, we're going to allocate this much, it doesn't necessarily commit to spending all of that, we can do it in a phased, phased way and come back and back away from that, that total amount of, of money. Uh, if it, if based on what we learned at, at a particular point through the project, that it's, it's not going to pay for the whole thing, and it's not going to address our problems in a comprehensive way.
So, um, I, I find what Commissioner, uh, Persinger is saying to have, uh, a lot of value, because the public hearings are a big, you know, consumption of resource on everyone's part. And the fact that we'd be asking our committee after all their work to go back and do another public hearing again, that's, that's kind of a, uh, somewhat of a burden, uh, to them. So my question is really from Mr. Townsend, and, and that is, do we have the ability to approve from a public hearing and infrastructure funds perspective the entire four seventy-eight, but require a, um, a simple meeting and a voter, uh, majority vote of the commissioners to allocate that money in chunks based on the projects as they kind of come and get costed out? Is, is that something we can do, or are we not allowed to do it that way?
Well, isn't, isn't it always the case that you allocate a sum and you withhold? I mean, you, you don't expend, um, all of that if it's not necessary, right?
Right, but let's, let's say, let's say that they, um, for example, we say up to four seventy-eight, okay, in, in the hearing today. And then, um, they, uh, the, the mayor spends the initial one twenty-five on the project, and they say, uh, bad news, it's going to cost the additional three fifty to do this one street. You know, I, I think that, I think that we as commissioners have to look at, is this one street three hundred and fifty of our infrastructure funds, half of our infrastructure funds, to just take care of one street? And that's, that's kind of my concern, is I really want to think about kind of how much benefit, how much other projects are going to come up infrastructure-wise? And do we want to allocate potentially three fifty to just one street? Um, but if that one street is not that price, I think that that, you know, starts to, you know, make, make more sense. And that's kind of what I'm, what I'm getting at. Is there a way for us to have flexibility and not keep going back through the public hearing process?
So, um, the premise of the public hearing i- is that you are, um, inviting comment and establishing priorities in terms of what projects should be, should be completed. That's an important part of it. It's not just the figure, it's what, how will, how will the sum of money be expended? And, um, the, the interest or the, uh, the point you're making is that, that, uh, the, the funds are meant to be, uh, apportioned, uh, based on, on needs and done in a strategic way. I think you've got all the flexibility that, that, that you need. That, uh, your motion to, to, uh, allocate that sum of money could include some, a simple reference to the fact that if you, if you were to get bad news, um, regarding an element of the plan that you, you can reallocate the funds, I don't think you'd need another public hearing to do that.
Um, but if, but to, by the way, Gary, I think that was a great point of, of, from a process perspective and, and looking for it, but my understanding is that we should actually, if, unless, if I'm, I'm reading this wrong, there's a potential of five hundred and forty thousand.
Four seventy-eight and sixty-nine, correct.
Right, so, uh, so should there be, is there, should we amend, I think from, from conversational perspective? Now, just think about it, is it, is it something less than four hundred and seventy-eight? Is it five hundred and forty as when whoever's going to make a motion or as we move forward?
Well, I, I think, Fred, make sure, let me make sure I understood, sorry, someone else talk?
It was Matt here. I make a comment?
Sure.
I mentioned earlier that we feel ninety five percent chance that the first two streets we can rely on without issue. That would reduce, uh, Kevin's, uh, four hundred and seventy eight thousand significantly already. So I think that sixty nine thousand dollars additional. Probably only like a two percent chance would that actually come into play? Where it would go above the four seventy eight, if you see what I'm saying. Because you're doing the, because you're doing the two streets by relining instead of excavation. That's probably where you would save sixty nine thousand dollars right there, but.
So. Okay, so, so Fred, if we were to motion to. Approve this and say that the initial hundred and twenty five thousand for the first two portions of the project is approved. And the additional funding needs a simple majority vote to be approved. Is that acceptable to just do the motion that way amended saying that that's what we're doing?
I think so.
Okay.
And just for the record, the, the committee, um, the infrastructure committee did recommend. That we move forward with this. Is that a correct, is that a correct statement?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. So any other discussion? If I, no, Gary, is that your finger?
Yeah, a couple of other, couple of other points. I think it's important to, to point out. Kind of the revenue flow, uh, into and out of the infrastructure budget. Through this, through the end of December, we added. Uh, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the infrastructure account. And, um. If I could, I can't find it again at the moment, but, um. And, you know, we do that by devoting three percent of transfer taxes. To the infrastructure account, twenty percent of the building permits. And, uh, five percent of seasonal and daily parking amount. So. You know, there is a regular flow of money into the infrastructure accounts. We're, we're, we're spending a huge chunk of it, but. Again, we, we have spent some money to identify some problems and it makes sense to me certainly to allocate some money to begin to address those problems. I, I think there's also going to be money. Uh, hopefully, uh, in terms of budget surplus from this current year, and we also have, you know, three, three months. Uh, of activity that will add to this, this infrastructure account. I think we'll have some budget surplus money that we may be able to allocate toward, toward infrastructure, but that's a discussion the commissioners have to have. The other point that I wanted to make, um. Unfortunately escapes me at the moment is these things sometimes.
Hopefully you get it back in a second.
Sorry.
All right, yeah. One of the things I'd like to see out of the, 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 the infrastructure committee is. More of a long range plans that we can see in, you know, kind of what is the next.
I'll talk to Jim about like what's next.
Just so that we, as we're allocating these funds, we also know what.
It's COVID, we should be spending like a bunch of junk sale.
I can touch it. All right. So are we at a point that we can make a motion?
I, if no one else has anything, I'll make a motion. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. Um, so my motion would be that we approve the ordinance as written for the spending of. Four hundred and seventy eight thousand plus the sixty nine thousand, uh, with the provision that. Uh, the initial expenditures, uh, be for the first two segments of the projects as discussed. Up to one hundred and twenty five and that additional funds. From that authorization, um, be spent upon majority approval of the commissioners.
Second.
Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's a unanimous pass. All right. Second item on the agenda, and I guess we can, these guys want to move on to their Friday night. They can if they're open already.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Harvey.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Merry weekend.
All right, you too. Uh, number two, discuss and possibly vote to approve an ordinance to amend chapter one eighty five zoning to raise the square foot threshold for providing off street parking. From two thousand square feet to four thousand square feet of patron area for restaurants located in the RB two zoning districts.
Would you like me to? Would you like me to make just some?
Of course.
All right. Thanks. So, um, the council, as you would, as you recall, had referred this matter to the. Planning Commission for a recommendation. That recommendation has come back. In the form of an approval, they had a public hearing. Uh, you've just conducted a public hearing. The, I, I believe we had a gentleman here, Mr. Montgomery, who may have been here to, to speak to this. As well, and it sounds like he was called away, um, with an emergency. Hopefully everything is fine there. The ordinance is structured in such a way that it is grouping now RB two. The RB two zone parking requirements with PRB one and PRB three in that they're excluded from the general. Requirements. So what's proposed is referring, um, specifically to the RB two district and not to any other district. Um, and it's setting up a separate criteria for RB two. The whereas clauses indicate that there's a justification for that. RB two plots or parcels tend to be. Smaller in dimension, uh, and located along the highway. The other whereas clauses, um, also speak to. Bringing our parking requirement for, uh, restaurants in line with our neighboring. Communities or more in line with, with our neighboring beach communities. The current standard is, um, triggered at, uh, two thousand square feet. And the proposed trigger now would be four thousand square feet of patron area. After which time, uh, off street parking, uh, would be required of, uh, restaurants in the RB two district. There is a subsection B that shows up on page two. Of the ordinance, that's just there to provide context. It's a continuation of the end. Of that portion of, uh, section one eighty five thirty five. It is not proposing a change for other commercial establishments. It's just, again, for context. And as we all know, the. Parking requirements are established both in the text, which is section one of the ordinance and in the table, which is section two of the ordinance. And obviously it's important that council, uh, revise them both so that they read identically. And this ordinance does that. So. Those are my introductory comments. If there are any questions for me, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Uh, the only thing, Fred, from where, how this. How this has been drafted, I believe that when we first looked at this, there was a conversation around. How the lease went from the two thousand, if you went from two thousand square feet to two thousand and one, you automatically were required to put at least ten spaces. And there was an early discussion about whether or not it should be, you know. It, it should you be penalized for that first two thousand? Or should it be in excess of? But the way I read this right now is if you have a, incorrect me if I'm wrong, if you have a four thousand and one square foot. With pay, uh, facility with patron space, you will be required to put in. Twenty spots. Is that correct?
So I, I don't know if the calculation is correct, but it doesn't, the, the parking requirements do not phase in, which is another way of, of saying, um. What you might prefer to see is that the requirements phase in because. The, the way it's currently worded before the ordinance and the way it will be worded. Worded after the ordinance unless you amend it today. Once you go over the threshold, then you're required to provide parking for, um, patron area within the first. In this case, four thousand square feet.
I just wanted to make that clear. That was a part of discussion we had early on. Um, and that's not part of this. So I'll, I'll open it up for the commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, I think this is a, uh, a good idea. I, I, I sat through the, uh, P and Z meeting and I know Gary had joined as well. I don't know who else, uh, joined online, but. You know, I, there was a lot of banner back and forth of what that number should be. Uh, do we know? Who's impacted? If, if we approved this at four thousand, is there any businesses we're leaving out? Or, or would still have parking? I, I'm just guessing, let's say somebody has, uh, four thousand and one square foot. I, I don't know, you know, is, are we okay at the four thousand number or is it, uh? Does it, does it need to be higher or does it need to be lower?
I'll, I'll allow Kate to correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but I believe, uh, that there are only three restaurants in town that are greater than four thousand square feet. Uh, but I do not believe they're in RB two. Is that correct?
That could very well be correct.
That there's only three restaurants in town that are greater than four thousand, uh, four thousand patron space. But they are not in RB two. Is that correct?
This isn't just restaurants. This is everybody that's in that resort business district, right?
No, this is just restaurants.
Just restaurants.
So, you know, I guess, if you look at the ordinance, uh, Commissioner Bauer, B, other commercial establishments is where non restaurants would fall.
That's unchanged.
Right.
Gotcha. And who, who do we have that's non? Restaurant? I guess that would be the mini golf course would be the only one. That I can think of.
I can't think of that.
Yeah, non restaurant, I think it'd be just the mini golf course.
Yeah, the, the mini golf course, though, I, I believe has two thousand or less.
Yeah, if I remember right, one thousand nine hundred and ninety nine and then you need parking.
I, right. So they're not, they're not impacted by the, the change because they don't fit into the restaurant category and, and. Like, I think. Um, I'm not sure that the planning commission, I, I was unable to attend that meeting, but I'm not sure that the planning commission took that subject up. Maybe you were, so perhaps they did discuss.
Now, I don't think that was discussed in that meeting, but I, you know, I want, it's hard to know like who exactly is in the, the, uh, you know, the different district. I'm, I'm, I'm good with the four thousand. I mean, it, you know, requiring parking for a business owner. That's not a great use of their spaces. We, and we probably all agree and, and, you know, I, I like the fact when people come to town, they, you know, you, you pay to park and. Hey, I pay to park when I go to other towns too, or I take an Uber or Lyft. I, I just think that's how, you know, that's how the world works these days. You know, requiring a private business to provide parking. Sometimes invites problems, um. You know, when, you know, the, I know we've had some issues with other parking lots and. You know, and I think when we get into that, that, uh, kind of area, you know, if we really want a parking. Place, maybe the, you know, the town could explore buying that, that land off of the business owners and operate parking lots, but. Yeah, I don't think we're going to think that's a good, uh, good use of, uh, capital either. So. So I'd be in favor of making a motion on this, uh. Everybody first.
Yeah, let's get, uh, Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I would just note that, uh, I, I believe that even if we had a restaurant in the RB two district that exceeded. Four thousand square feet, that it, it would not be affected, um, by, by this change in the, um. In the code because they're already operating under an existing conditional use. So, um, you know, we'd not be changing the rules for them. A couple of other points I would note. I mean, I know the planning and zoning discussed. Why four thousand square feet? You know, why not something different? You know, there's, there's no, there's no hard and fast answer to that, um, that I'm aware of. You know, one of the, the neighbors to the south that no one has really talked about is Fenwick Island. And if you look at the Fenwick code. They actually require, uh, parking spaces for, you know, one parking space for every one hundred square foot, foot. Or square feet rather of, of patron space. So they actually start from, from zero. Now they. You know, it's a very different situation down there. That kind of, um, rule would not work for us because of our existing requirement. That says you don't need, need, uh, parking until you reach two thousand square feet. But I would also note in terms of the, the four thousand square feet. Restaurants in Fenwick are defined as less than four thousand square feet. You can't have a, a restaurant bigger than that. So, you know, i- if that provides some comfort or guidance in terms of why four thousand square feet and not something else. Uh, that's the only thing that I've been able to find to, to point to.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, just one other, I just want to make one comment and I'll. Open up the other two commissioners if they, uh, if they do so. And it just is a matter of fact of, uh, in the Den, Delaware General Assembly. House Bill two ninety, uh, did pass the Senate yesterday. And that is to allow for the use of, of outdoor seating or what was parking and become outdoor seating for. In a capacity to be, uh, to help from, uh, from the COVID relief perspective. So those, those restaurants that we do have in town that have been using those parking spaces as outdoor seating. It would appear that that's going to contribute to that, uh, from an ordinance perspective. So I just wanted everyone to know that that's out there for you. So any other comments? Commissioner Givens, Commissioner Juzinski?
I guess my only thing is, you know, we've, uh, had quite a few meetings about this and, uh. You know, we've had time to get a lot of public input and, uh. You know, my sense is, is the public kind of wants to see some change, wants to see our, uh. RB two businesses kind of invigorated with some new blood and, uh, this will help us get that done.
So with that being said, can I have a motion? To approve, uh, this, the ordinance? I can read it out. Time for you to read it out, whoever can.
Commissioner Bauer wants to do it.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Bauer, you want to?
It doesn't matter. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
No, no. You were ready before, go.
Go.
All right, let me, so I have to read it just, uh, as approved here, right? So. This isn't resolution. Let me go to. I don't have it up here in front of me, so bear with me.
It could just be a motion to approve the, the ordinance.
A motion to approve the ordinance as written? You could use, do that?
Yep. Motion to approve ordinance to amend chapter one eighty five zoning to raise the square foot threshold for providing off street parking from two thousand square feet. To four thousand square feet of patron space of patron area. For restaurants located in the RB two zoning district.
Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Says by Commissioner Givens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That, uh, that ordinance passes unanimously. All right. Long time coming. All right. So next item on the agenda, number three, review and discuss current town staff salaries. And discuss and possibly vote to amend current town staff salaries. I'll turn that over to town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Delaware truly is a dominant state. The Dewey Beach is really the brightest diamond out of all the, out of all the. Dewey has both, has the best of both worlds. Beautiful beaches to the east, gorgeous bay to the west. Really Dewey has it all. Town employees are dedicated and law, and law. Some of them, uh, have been here over twenty years. Four of them have been here over ten years. Through the past challenges with COVID and everything else, they have continued to work and report to work and make the town a better place. Over the, over the years, town employees have witnessed others in other positions and other ocean front communities. Constantly get a pay increase and doing the same work. Our officers, our admin, our HR, our clerk, our dispatchers, all our employees. Uh, over the last twenty years could have gone to another, uh, town and made more money, but they didn't. They stayed here at Dewey Beach. The police chief and his team presented a commissioner stats, uh, to the commissioner stats on the challenges they faced to keep their staff. As a reminder, over the past twenty one years, the police department has lost sixteen officers. Over, over just not, what it comes down to, and you can ask the chief this later, it just comes over salaries. Really, it, it does. Over the past twenty five years, only four officers have retired from our department. In the same twenty one years, our department has put fifteen recruits through the police academy, which only five are still with the department. The surrounding towns offer, offer more benefits and money to the officers. Our officers are starting out at, uh, the starting pace forty one five. And other, uh, other departments are starting at fifty six and fifty seven thousand. Finally, our administrative, uh, support folks that we have are doing a multiple, uh. Number of different jobs, whereas in other towns, they may be just doing one of those jobs. Here in Dewey Beach, they do multiple jobs and they do it well. The town commissioner voted to increase the hotel tax by point, um. Five percent to two percent, uh, this coming, uh, April. Based on that and based on the last six months so far, with a two percent tax rate. The town can see close to four hundred thousand dollars in revenue added to our budget. Right now, the commissioner voted that that would be split fifty fifty. We'd like to see that split more along the lines of maybe sixty forty to ensure our salary, uh, ensure that we can pay for the salaries. For our employees. The salary adjustment is not the final solution. I do have, I've been working with Sheena. We do have a, a, a scaled salary for the administrative employees. And as of yesterday, working with the chief and lieutenant Hocker, I have a, a, a salary, uh, scale that I'll introduce to the commissioners in February. The cost of living in Sussex County is six point five percent higher than the national app. Inflation this year is seven percent during the last twelve months and is the highest since nineteen eighty two and it doesn't seem to be slowing down. Our, our Dewey Beach employees are hardworking, smart and dedicated to their job. We want Dewey Beach to continue to be one of the best, family friendly, safe, clean beaches on the East Coast. We need to pay our employees. The compensation that they deserve. I'd like to thank you for the helpfulness. So with that, I opened it up to discussion.
Just a quick question. You said the salary scale you're going to introduce to us in February. Can you understand what that, that's going to be?
So for example, um, for our employees. This would be a, a scale that would say you have so many years in, there'd be an increase every year of three percent. So it'd be a paying. There'd be an increase every year of three percent. So it would be a paying grade scale, which most towns have, but we do not have.
Oh, so similar, similar to the step increases in the.
Yeah, yeah, they'd be stepping. Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I'll be introducing those in February.
Okay.
But that's not obviously for discussion today. The documents that were presented to us in terms of potential changes to salary documents. As to the salary is, is for us here for discussion and available on the website. Um. So I'll, I'll open up to the commissioners to discuss the documents that they have and, and ask the town manager if, if you have any questions. So who wants to start? Commissioner Givens?
May I? Thank you. Um, I, um, appreciate all the effort that went into gathering all this information because it helps to have the comparisons along the way. Um, I am entirely in support of providing our, um. Staff with, uh, more financial, um, compensation for the work that they do. Um, I don't know if we're supposed to get a little. Detailed or picky in this, um, but it looks like both, um, the sergeant and the lieutenant would be getting equal. Increases and it seems like perhaps lieutenant should have more than sergeant. I like what the sergeant's getting, so maybe lieutenant needs to have more. It's kind of weird talking about this with people in the room. Um, and I also think there's not quite enough differentiation between patrolmen and patrolman first class. I want people to see that if they stay their steps, in addition to the steps that you go tell us about in February.
Sure. So, so after talking with the chief and the, the lieutenant, we came back and if you look at your, your, your salary rate that's captured. For the police department and you go down to the patrolman, currently it says fifty-three thousand dollars. After discussions with the chief. And the lieutenant, we'd like to see that go down to fifty-one thousand. And then the PFC, uh, they would go up to fifty-eight. And the corporal grade one would go to sixty-four and the staff corporal would go to sixty-six. So you're losing six from the bottom, six thousand from the bottom and you're gaining six from the, there at the top and it would remain the same. I'm not sure what the correct salary would be for the, the lieutenant that, that you suggested though.
So Bill, I'm, I'm sorry. So the document that we have right now, is there any net? Giving you the, you know, you run the team, run the, is there all the way to the right, you have a net effect of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars in terms of these salary changes? Making those changes to the patrolmen, et cetera. How does that number change?
No, it doesn't change that number.
The total doesn't change at all?
No. It's six, it's, you're taking six away, you're adding six to the other.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Bauer, Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, you know, I, so the changes are, I mean, it's, it's, it's a net. There's no net effect on the amount of the raises. It's just the stepping stones and the space between each of the grades, correct?
This is, that's correct.
This is new year one.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that makes sense. I mean, it, I mean, it should be. I mean, you get more responsibility, you should be paid more. Uh, so I think in, in, you know, putting some space between those, it, it makes a good career path and that, that's our goal is to. Keep people here long term. Uh, I don't believe we have issue finding people. It's a matter of, you know, once they're here, can they go off to. Where the grass is greener and, and go make more money somewhere else. So, uh, so this makes perfect sense to me.
Um, Commissioner Persinger?
Um, yeah, a few comments. Um, I, I am fully supportive of adjusting the salary levels for town employees. Uh, in a way so that they, they each feel fairly compensated. Um, and that the town is, is in the best position to compete for, uh, for talent when positions become open. Um, I don't think it's our role as commissioners to try to mic, micromanage the town manager in this process. And so. Um, I personally would not have any recommendations on any individual salaries. I think, uh, it's really the town manager's role to. Make sure in, at least in his mind and collectively with the employees, that the salary levels that he proposes are appropriate and, um, and internally consistent. What I do think our role is, is to make sure that we can establish with some confidence that these salaries fit within the budget. Um, so just one quick question and I have some other comments. When would these salaries take effect?
Right now they're built into the twenty twenty-three, uh, budget.
So April first, Gary.
Okay. So that, that said, then I, I really believe that, you know, we've only had these salaries, uh, since Tuesday. Uh, along with the salary comparison, we've only had the draft budget since Wednesday. Um, I think, um, approving these salaries really should be an integral part of our process to approve the budget. We need to make sure that in fact that, and feel confident that we have the required revenue streams and that we have a balance of expenditure so that we really can su- support these salaries. I would prefer today rather than providing formal approval to the town manager for these salary levels to give him some indication. That we believe these are, uh, appropriate without a fa- formal vote so that they can, we can be assured that they're fully incorporated in the budget process. And then we can have some additional time and come back in February, uh, and potentially even approve, make a final approval for the budget. Um, and the salary levels. I, I don't think we've had enough time for, uh, for us to consider this on any, any thorough way. Uh, for the public to be able to, to see these and have an opportunity to, to, to make some comments. Um. And I think if we take some additional time, we'll, we'll still actually be ahead of schedule. If we come back in, in, at the February meeting and make final approval for this. Uh, for this budget, then, you know, we're several weeks ahead of what the town charter requires, which I believe is the second Saturday, um, in, um, in March. Um. So I, I think, uh, the other point I want to make too, uh, or first of all, a question, does the current budget or the draft budget rather. Uh, assume that the split on the hotel tax would be sixty, forty with sixty going to support. Town expenses versus forty going to capital improvements?
No, right now, Gary, the, the budget that you have in hand assumes fifty percent.
Okay. I, I would.
There's no change to that.
I would still support that fifty, fifty split. Uh, but I think that's, you know, that's another question. Again, I think. Doing all of this a, as a comprehensive process in terms of approving the budget is really the right way to, to do this. Um. I, I have no quarrel with the salary levels that have been proposed. If the town manager is comfortable with these, then I'm comfortable with them as well. I just want to make sure that we've been paid for it. So I think it's part of the budget process for me.
Any other?
Yeah.
Discussion comments?
So, um, I just want to confirm, uh, because I did spend some time going through the draft budget. The draft budget that you have right now includes these guys' salary levels, correct?
It does.
And, um, what I didn't see here is I see some of the part-time, uh, changes, but what I didn't see was. And I saw it in the budget, that the numbers were changing, but I didn't see what the underlying numbers were. Have you finished deciding for the seasonal police and the lifeguards? What adjustments are necessary and specifically, uh, to the recruitment process around those, which sometimes can be very difficult, right? Um, and how those adjustments, um, are going to meet that need?
Right. So I looked at Bethany and Rehoboth, uh, I spoke to the mayor a little bit about this in, in course with Sheena. So for, to be competitive at the lifeguard level, Rehoboth this year is going to be paying sixteen dollars an hour for their new rookies. We're going to bump up from fourteen that we had last year. We're going to be at fifty. We're still going to be behind them. But we had fifty-two people try out last year, even though we were further behind in roads. I think coming up and almost getting to a dollar within. Rehoboth for our lifeguards, we'll, we'll, we'll be fine there. Um, for our police officers, we're looking at for our new seasonal police officers. Seventeen dollars an hour, uh, for them coming. That's built into this budget. And for our parking folks, our new parking folks. Books, sixteen dollars an hour and that is also built into the budget.
And so on the latter two, um, and chief, if you want to weigh in, do you feel confident on, uh, ability to recruit people? I know sometimes that's an issue.
Uh, preliminary, um, commissioner, um, we're having a pretty good, uh. We're having pretty good interest so far in recruiting for seasonal police. Um, again, the background phase hasn't started, but we've had quite a bit of interest over this time last year. So I'm feeling pretty good about that right now. Um, one thing I do want to, want to just hit on right quick, um, when we were talking earlier. If anybody does have any questions, why we went from fifty-three down to fifty-one. Me and the lieutenant had a long talk with this and it included the town manager. Where we're at right now, we got trapped or the conversation got hung up in starting salaries. That's not a problem for us. What we're really focused on is that the retention of our experienced officers. So the way we felt that was, it's, we're not going to be hopefully recruiting anytime soon. For a new police officer. So that's why we took that, took that salary down, but we made it for our senior guys. And the ones that's been here a while, we want to retain that talent with all the experience and, and the training that they've received throughout the years with us. So I just kind of wanted to clarify you guys on that. Um, it's not so much. We were worried about attracting anybody, but it was the retention of our, of our current staff that we've got. Um, and again, uh, commissioner, that was a good question. This time last year, we did not have anywhere the, uh, amount of interest in seasonal positions. That we've done, but again, the town manager and Sheena has been great working with us. We've tried, uh, a, a new recruiting tool this year with Indeed, and so far we're having some positive results. So if things are on track and the backgrounds turn out, um, I'm not as concerned right now as I was this time last year.
Great, thank you.
That's great. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Well, um, I, I've looked at this and I, I did have a chance to spend some time with the budget. And I, and my view is, well, doing everything in one meeting, budget and raises and everything is, is kind of nice. Um. This has been put out there and the way I look at it is I don't see anything happening with our budget that's going to prohibit us. From doing the salary program. And your, your intent is for this to start the first day of the new fiscal year, correct?
We do have the money right now in this budget to do this, but it's in the, the current budget for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so, um, so I don't, I don't personally have an objection to, to doing this. And going ahead and putting it in the twenty twenty-three budget, because I just think that. Looking at the preliminary budget you've done, I don't, I don't think anything is going to come down to a crunch where we're going to say, hey, we can't do this.
Uh, from, from my own point of view, when I looked at the current rate and looked at what the towns, I mean, there's two, there's two competing factors here. It's not just the great police force we have, but also the great, uh, administrative staff. And it's not just the towns that can take these people from us. It is also other businesses, right? So there's just a, it's, it's, it's a tough market. We, we know what it is, that, uh, there's, there's possibility. When looking at just from a town perspective and seeing that our current rate is a hundred and sixty-three below the median. I mean, if collectively, it just, it's, it, it is a big number. I mean, it does, it, and by doing this for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're basically. Getting them close where it's, it's a conversation that I think anytime you're going to lose somebody, if, you should never lose anybody over money. That's as far as I'm concerned. There's, you should always have from a compensation standpoint, um, be at the top of the game. So. Um, I, I agree with you, but I will throw it out there from a commissioner, if, if anybody further conversations or if anybody wants to make a motion.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Comment. So if we're approving this, are we approving, we're proving it to start in April or are we approving it to start? Immediately or next pay or two pay cycles, whatever, you know, how, how quick are we implementing it?
Conversation point, commissioner.
Yeah, conversation point. I mean, so, yeah, I, I guess my, my concern would be. You know, if we're going to prove it, it doesn't start for months. I hope we don't lose anybody. Wow, it'd be three months, right? I hope we don't lose anybody in three months because then we go into the season. And, uh, we're short-staffed before we even get, uh, out of the gates. So, uh, I want to make sure we're, you know. You know, we're, we're good. If we're going to prove it, we have the money to do it. Uh, I, I say we do it, but.
Okay. All right. Well, do I have a motion of any?
Well, if, if, uh, it, it sounds like there's some interest in doing something sooner. When you say we have the money in this year's budget. Um, how much of an impact is it to do? It's, I guess it's, uh, I guess it's two twelfths of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you probably have this figure out of your head, but I don't. Um, so. Let's see here. So.
One-sixth of that.
Yeah. Well, one-sixth of one fifty is, uh, is, um, twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, yeah, let's, let's not quibble over twenty-five thousand dollars. So my motion is to pass the budget program effective February first. Um, and, uh, uh, thank you for all the work you put into it.
Um. Eh, well, uh, so just, there's a comment. It's the only thing that I would, it, it depends, uh, how do I say this? Take two. So if there is a, um, uh, from a motion perspective, the only thing that was administratively, if it's an admit of a pay period. Then the town would have to be calculated, a, you know, the old way.
Isn't February first the beginning of a pay period?
Uh, we're paid every two, they're paid at, we're, they're paid every two weeks.
Oh, it's not bi-monthly, bi-weekly?
Correct.
Okay. Well, what's the, what's the beginning?
We can amend that to say something like the, uh, the earliest pay cycle.
Yeah. So, okay. So I'll amend my motion to the raise is effective at the beginning of the next pay cycle.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second? Any further discussion before we vote? Yes, Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, I, I clearly have a minority position here, but that's okay. Um, you know, we have not had one word of discussion about our revenue streams for next year. You know, at least certainly over the past four or five years, we've had budget finance committee take a look, a detailed look at both the revenue streams and the expenditure side. They've had a lot of conversations about, there've been a lot of changes as a result of that. We've had this budget for two days. I don't think we have a good sense. It, it may be a perfectly fine budget. Um, I took a look at some of the numbers. I was comfortable with some and maybe not so comfortable with others. If we look at the revenue streams, you know, we've got, I think, four hundred and some thousand dollars projected from hotel tax. Might be a good number. It, it might not. I think, you know, we only have five months of experience so far. I don't know what, I, I don't think we know yet what we're going to get in the other seven months. Um, accommodations taxes, we, we had a very good year this past year. Uh, but travel opportunities have opened up for people. They can go elsewhere. They don't have to go to Dewey Beach. Are we going to do as well this year, uh, uh, this next year, uh, as we did the previous year? I don't know. It's, it's again, it's something. That can be considered, it's up for consideration. I, you know. I apologize to the, uh, to the employees in town, but again, I'm fully supportive of adjusting salaries. I think to do it now to make it immediate, uh, without having any, any discussion of what the budget looks like for FY twenty-three is the wrong thing to do. Uh, so I intend to vote against this, uh, but it's not because I don't support the sal- these salary increases for the employees. I just don't think we've had enough discussion and we've had enough due diligence and offered the public, uh, enough opportunity for comment on this issue, uh, to take action now.
Okay. Um, yeah, as always, Commissioner Persinger, respect your opinion. Um, and you know, one of the other things that. For anybody from the town who's looking at where we are from a financial perspective, and we will be reviewing this in items eleven or twelve. Uh, items twelve, I mean, the town currently, as you have stated, uh, Commissioner Persinger has, has done very well this year. Uh, so much so that before any set-asides, we are roughly two million dollars ahead of our budget for last year. Um, that being said, uh, from a, you know, an additional hundred and fifty thousand into, you know, is. In support of a group of employees that are, are strongest asset, most valuable asset. Um, it just, again, I just want to put that out for the record of how well financially we are doing as of this current fiscal year.
The, the only thing I'd add, and you know, I, I respect your opinion and I know you like to, um, have things, you know, buttoned up. And so I. Understand that motivation, but when, when I look at the situation we have with the salaries, um, I've never looked at a full salary list before. Um, candidly across the board. It's the first time someone's actually done it and where I saw tons of comparisons. I've seen individual ones, but I've never seen. A comprehensive study and saw what the towns are. And, and frankly, um, from my perspective. We have to do this. You know, I'm just, we have to do this, not just because it's the right thing to do, because it's the right thing for the town to do to. Attract and be able to retain, uh, the people we have. So even if the budget had a bad situation for next year, I would be looking to find that money. Somewhere else. I wouldn't be looking to find the money here. Um, so, uh, you know, my perspective is, um. This is, this is definitely in the need column. It just is, you know, so that's why I support it.
Uh, I believe.
I would like to add to that, that I, I am, um, presuming, I'm not going to say assuming. But presuming that one of the reasons the town is doing so well is because of these lovely people that are working in the town. So they should be rewarded for that.
Um. Any other comments?
Yeah, and I respect what Gary's saying too, in, in, but, yeah, I understand that. Hey, no matter what we do, I mean, if we're trying to balance a budget, we're, you know, we're, we've got to take care of employees first and foremost and, and. We've got to take care of employees first and foremost, and and the sooner we do it, I think the better off we are. We don't want to lose anybody between now and and then, but hey, everybody, hey, just the world we're in now, whether you work in a restaurant or you work in a municipality. Hey, somebody's going to try to take you away because everybody's looking for workers, right? So I think the sooner we do it, the better. But I respect what Gary's saying here and as far as the budget goes, but I don't. You know, if if we we would find a way besides employee pay. To balance that budget next year, so I'm comfortable voting on this.
All right, we we have a motion and we have a second and we had discussion, so I would like to put it to a vote. So all in favor of approving the current, the town, the adjustment to the town staff salaries effective in the next pay period? Do I vote for ayes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, duly noted. That motion, that vote passes a four to one. All right, on to number. All right, number, let's move on to number. Number five, no, number four, discuss possible votes temporarily suspend town of Dewey Beach. Virtual meeting policy and allow boards, commissions and or committees to meet virtually under the rules and regulations of the Freedom of Information Act and State of Emergency issued by the governor state of Delaware. Just as a matter of background, we had, as we went into COVID protocol, we had amended the requirements of being in person. As we exited and things that appeared to have gotten better. That was, we we self-imposed changes here in terms of requiring an anchor tenant, anchor. Meeting area as well as from a commissioner perspective being a majority. And this is a discussion about the possibility. Of going back and for the interim, having all virtual meetings. And so I'll open up to the commissioners to discuss for during this period of time and then if if that is the decision. Then there'll be a period, another, a future meeting where we may want to come back to the table and have meetings in person. So I'll open up for discussion.
Paul wants to talk.
Commissioner Bauer.
I'd like to make a motion to go to all virtual meetings for the time being. For foreseeable future.
Okay, all right.
I would second that.
I got a second, any further discussion?
Well, I need an important question answered. And the question, this is really to Commissioner Person Juries. So will my next absences, it being virtual, thanks for time to count against my allowance of three virtual meetings? In the event that we come back to in-person meetings? Because I'm I've been kind of budgeting these carefully and keeping them as my little stash.
Well. In my my view, we're a little bit off the rails in terms of the policy anyway. You know, I'm I'm not, I I don't know whether my virtual attendance counts against my three even today. You know, I was I was under a misunderstanding, I I thought that we were going all virtual for everyone and. I did not pay close attention to the location of the meeting on today's agenda. And suddenly realized that in fact it was an in-person meeting. I I would I would think that we would suspend. Any accounting, counting absence or not counting virtual participation toward that limit. Until we go back to the regular policy where we're having in-person meetings and, you know, and the quorum requirements and that sort of thing. I I think we would just suspend that policy for going all virtual. That's that's my view.
That was really just my dry sense of humor, it wasn't an actual question, but.
Do we, we have, we have a motion.
I actually.
Sure.
So if if this gets approved, then we no longer have this anchor requirement.
Correct.
So I I have a way to maybe streamline the process of going in and out with the. Potential modification of of Commissioner Bauer's thing. And why don't we just say that we are all virtual as long as the state of Delaware or the local or Sussex County. Has a indoor masking requirement. That way, if the masking requirement is lifted, we kind of know that we can do in-person meetings, if the masking requirement is in place, we know. We need to be virtual and that just might make it a little simpler, it's kind of a a checkpoint to know when we have to do which.
I I have.
I would agree to that.
I have a request from the floor from former mayor. Mr. Mr. Cook, if you would like to, I know it's not customary, but you are a special person.
Town owner, because I hate it when former mayors come in and claim, I'm a former mayor, listen to me.
Your former everything and current also.
I don't understand, so would the commissioners meeting be all virtual? There would be no physical presence?
While the mask mandate is in place in the state of Delaware, yes.
And that's allowed by the state?
Okay, so can I?
Of course.
Address that because I I think. I I think the the state has passed this amendment to to FOIA, which is exactly what you're getting at, Mr. Cook. And I don't think it's necessarily tied to masks, but it might be, I don't know if that's coincidental or not. But but FOIA requires that you you have a a number of things, including a central location. What's the terminology again? Anchor spot, so you got to have it, you got to have an anchor location under FOIA. And it's the governor's emergency proclamation that suspends that aspect of the Freedom of Information Act. I think you can tie your policy to. The the existing FOIA law and I just don't know if there's a difference between indoor masks. And the FOIA law so that so that it could possibly be that you're required to have an anchor location because the. State of emergency is lifted, but you're still required to wear a mask. So I I we need to observe the law, whatever the law is. And we have a policy right now, which is more restrictive of us. We're we're going to suspend the policy and observe the law, I think, is is what we're.
And it is a self-directed, we put this in place.
So again, if you just simplify it for a dummy like me, in other words. If this passes tonight, you will have only virtual meetings and there will be no physical location.
First, well, the the notion in my mind is for so long as the law permits that.
And and that is not right now.
And that's the law right now and it's not permanent, it's it's tied to the governor's.
Really discouraging people from attending meetings.
Well, the 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 state is discouraging people from assembling anywhere, including. In municipal meetings for the time being.
Okay.
So I'm fine with my modified motion of the original one, Fred, it sounds like you might be recommending we don't do my modification, is that kind of what I'm hearing from you?
I don't, I I'm not 100% comfortable with tying it to the mask mandate. Because I don't know if the mask mandate could outlast the governor's state of emergence, well.
I have a simplified version of my motion, if I'm allowed to change it.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we suspend it and suspend in-person meetings until further notice?
And then do we have to vote to call them back?
Then we'll bring them back, right?
But I think. It's it's easier just to tie it. To what what Fred suggested earlier that in-person meetings would be suspended. Basically, and as long as as long as FOIA allows us to have virtual meetings, we would suspend in-person meetings. And when that changes, then we would go back to in-person meetings.
You mean without an anchor location is what you mean, right? You mean, as long as FOIA allows us to do them without an anchor location?
That's right.
It'll still stay suspended.
So let me just make the comment, that is that, you know, I am, I'm all for in-person meetings, I think you get much more done, being able to work with people across the table. The the goal of this, the goal of of putting this on the agenda. Was to for us not to violate our own self. Policing in terms of how many people here in order to have a quorum, in order to make decisions. If if somebody still wants to show up here, I'm I'm okay with that, but I understand this is what we're doing. For everyone else's sake, so I'll throw it out there as to whoever wants to make a motion. To allow, basically to allow us to conduct these meetings. Without violating quorum, so. So.
So if we just suspend the policy, we can do whatever we want month to month, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that's.
So why don't we just suspend it?
To suspend.
Motion to suspend.
Suspend the policy. And re temporarily suspend the policy until further notice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Gary?
Well, I yeah, I guess I don't quite understand it, though, I mean, so so what does that mean for the next meeting?
So we're virtual till further notice.
Well, I think it's up to you all to decide whether you're going to have an anchor location or not.
That's that's the issue for me.
Pardon me?
I mean, that's kind of the issue for me, we're leaving, we're really, what we're going to do, we really have left uncertain.
Well, what's on the agenda was this was the consideration of suspending your your ordinance. Or excuse me, your policy, which was more restrictive than the current law. And so now you've you've done that and and I think you all are free to exercise your discretion in terms of how you want to conduct your meetings. In the future versus requiring. A anchor location and a quorum presence.
Right, which is.
Because the law doesn't require that.
That's the only thing that we're suspending right now.
I guess it also does not, it does not require us to have a virtual meeting for the next meeting.
So I think is your is your objection, Commissioner Person Jure, that let's say. For whatever reason, the the mayor decided he wanted to have an anchor location and. And have, you know, one of the town staff here to have an anchor location, that you do not want that to be an option, is that what the objection is?
That is, at least in terms of the the current status of COVID infection, yes, I I could have been there today possibly. But I did not, I did not feel comfortable sitting in a room. In fairly close proximity with many other people when the case rates for COVID infection are so high. So, you know, again, as long as the state allows virtually, virtual only meetings. It just seems to me that we should be consistent, just as other towns have done. To decide to hold all meetings virtually, we're doing that with all the committees. I'm not sure why we're leaving an opportunity for commissioners. To be exposed and potentially face a higher risk of COVID infection. As well as exposing staff unnecessarily to the risk of COVID infection. That's, you know, just not a definite.
I think we're all, we're all on the same page, I think we're all in agreement that it's to go virtually. I mean, that we we can't can't do that right now under the current, currently what we put in place, we cannot have an all virtual meeting.
Right, does 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 any commissioner plan to be in person if we pass this? Because I don't.
No.
Say that again?
No, does any commissioner plan to be in person if we pass this?
Plan is a, if we if we, I could be here, like, just, I've got nowhere else to go, so. So I mean, I don't know what your point is, like, if you've said you need somebody here. Dale's point, I like, I I understand Gary's point in terms of COVID, I I don't want to restrict people from coming in and weighing in on the things that.
I get it, I think I think where Commissioner Person Jure is coming from a little bit of is. You know, when you have a hybrid meeting that's in-person and remote. It it's it's always for the people who are remote, a little bit more difficult for them to participate fully. And I think what he might be getting at is, you know, the desire, as he always does, is to participate fully. And, you know, his trying to balance that with, you know, very legitimate health and safety risks. You know, so while the governor's order is in place, I I think my my ask would be. You know, as long as I really tied to him saying, if the governor's saying everyone has to wear a mask indoors, that's why I suggested that modification. Then maybe that's our indication that, hey, we shouldn't be having these meetings in person. And that's kind of why I went that way, but you know, I'll support whatever the group wants to do, but and I shouldn't really offer to speak for you, Gary, because that's totally unfair, so I apologize for that. But that's kind of what I'm hearing when you're talking about this.
And if if I can please add some information from some other towns, what I have heard is that they are meeting in person, but they're not. Permitting the public to come in, because that's one of the ways of decreasing. But that is totally counter what Mr. Cook was saying, he wants to have people be able to talk, I just shared more.
We all want to go back to normal. We all want to be able to be, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case for for Mahovas, I think it's, that's not the case for other towns as well, they've gone to all virtual. And I'm just looking for for some certainty here, but if if we've suspended our policy, there is in some sense no, no problem with. Virtual participation if in fact the decision collectively among the commissioners is to have an in-person. You know, so long as this FOIA change is is in place. So I let's move on, I mean, I think I'm belaboring the the point too much here and I, we have other things on our agenda.
All right, so do we have, we had a motion, we had a second, we are out of vote, no?
Yes. If Commissioner Bauer could clarify what his motion was.
It was to suspend. To suspend the virtual meeting policy.
Yep, right, and.
And I stuck it at that.
All in favor?
No, suspend the in-person meeting, right, is it, we're. We're getting rid of the in-person, we're keeping the virtual.
Well, I was referring to the policy by the virtual meeting policy.
Temporarily suspend the town of Dewey Beach virtual meeting policy, allowing us to meet virtually without an anchor site.
That's that's my motion.
Yes.
That's what I said.
Second by Commissioner Persinger.
Yes.
I'll call a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous, okay, going virtual. Number five on the agenda, discuss a possible vote to approve members of the climate change committee. Gary, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure, as I indicated earlier, we we did get a great response to the email that the town sent out asking for volunteer for this committee. Let me read the list of people we have for the committee, we have Dave Davis's chair, we've already approved Mr. Davis's chair. The members, the other members would be Phil Winkler, Drew Martin, Stacy Hannah, Deborah Phillips. Marty Tar and Rich Soper. And I would like to make a motion to accept these these people as members of the climate change committee.
I'll motion up.
You want a second at Paul, that was, just Gary made the motion.
I'll second it, rather, yeah.
All right, any discussion? All in fa, all in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Number six, discuss a possible vote to add two new members to the marketing committee. Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, I'd like to add two people to the marketing committee, Alex Cedric and Carmel Mofaletto. Their bios are listed as our supporting documents, I'd like to make a motion to add them to the marketing committee.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favors, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes, decision passes unanimously. Discuss a possible vote to move forward, to take the next steps, to amend the code. To allow for an increase of the accommodation tax. I will start this one, we we've had various conversations over the years. What is on our website as a supporting document, I believe. Actually, is the chapter 167 on the taxation on the accommodation tax. The issue is that right now that we are locked at 3% on the accommodation tax. Given how the code is written, or how chapter 167 is written. And what I was hoping for is to have a discussion. As most of you know, there's been conversations at the state level to potentially put in a state-based accommodation tax of up to 8%. And that would have, if that was to happen. Any towns from a unincorporated perspective. That would have people that are renting out their homes, that that money would go to the state. What 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 I am proposing out here to give us some of the optionality and flexibility. To increase us to allow to take it up to 8%, that's not saying that we are taking it up to 8%. But simply to allow, and if we were at a point in time that the commissioners would have to go through the process of increasing it. So based upon those facts, I'll open the floor for discussion.
So just help me understand, is the tax capped by charter or just by ordinance?
I believe it's capped by charter.
Okay, so, so. Yeah, okay, so.
It would have to be a referendum of some sort.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just trying to understand what what we're, what step we're actually doing today.
The desire is to. Change 16715, for example, where it says the combination tax rate shall be set at from time to time by the commissioners of Dewey Beach. But shall not exceed 3% unless approved by referendum and all. but shall not exceed 3% unless approved by referendum and authorized by the Delaware General Assembly, is to put this through a referendum to change that 3% to 8%.
Okay, so that, what that means, I'm just trying to understand the process we'll go through. So we make this change and assuming it gets approved, then it has to be in a referendum either the next general election or through a special election. Is that correct, Fred?
General Assembly.
No, the referendum part of it.
So I need to look at the charter provision, but it sounds like you've got to start with a charter amendment, which requires us to reach out to our legislative team and run it through the general assembly. Because you can't change the law that's expressed in the ordinance in a manner which is inconsistent with the charter. So, so ultimately the goal is to do as the mayor said, change 16515 so that, or at least tentatively, that's the goal. So it might read something different than it currently reads, but you can't do that until the charter's met.
Just put one point on that. I don't think we need to amend the charter. What the charter says is the accommodation tax on a residential rental is as set from time to time by the town council, but may not exceed 3% of the rent or lease amount unless approved by referendum. There's no reference to the state legislature in the charter. That reference is only in the, in the code itself. We had this conversation at the last meeting and I thought the conclusion was that the charter controlled here and that we would not have to go back through the legislature, it would just require a referendum.
Okay, I follow you. Yeah, so if that's the way the charter reads, then yes, it would you, the charter would authorize you to raise that tax rate above 3%, but only pursuant to a referendum. Therefore, if you conduct the referendum and the referendum authorizes the change, then you would be able to change the
So do we, do we do the, do we do the change to 167 and then the referendum or the referendum and then change to 167?
The referendum first.
Okay, right. So I think, okay, so the only, the only question is whether we just want the referendum at our next election or whether we want to do a special referendum for it. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I think that's, that, that would be a question you'd have to answer, yes.
So what are the next steps? Obviously, we're going to have a conversation whether we agree on this change and assuming that we would, because I would imagine that if the citizens of Dewey Beach were faced with having to pay this tax, they would much rather the money, say, here in town, supporting the town, versus it going up to the state level. Nothing against the state, we love you. But, so what are the next steps for us to, to do here? I guess that's where I'm, I'm lost.
Go ahead, Gary. You had your hand up first.
I had a question also. The question is, is 8% the right number? We, I'm having trouble getting back to see the, for some reason I'm uncomfortable talking without being able to see the
The charter.
I can't see the meeting room. For some reason, it makes me want to talk.
We can see you.
Okay, alright. I've got it back. The question is, is 8% the right number? If we were to provide the opportunity for us to increase to 8%, there's nothing prevents Sussex County from imposing a tax on short-term rentals. They do not have one now. But they couldn't impose an 8% tax potentially, or the state could impose that on, not Sussex County, the state could do that on short-term rentals. That means that these short-term rentals could potentially be subject to a tax of 16%. Is that what we want to do? I mean, I think, isn't 8% in excess of anything else that other municipalities have in place at this point?
My understanding, Gary, is that the, the way the conversation is that it was a maximum of 8%. And that if the, if the incorporated town had, for example, had 3%, then the state would have the ability to get to the other five.
Yeah, but that's
I did not look at it as an add-on.
That's a specific legislative proposal. That, that doesn't mean that that necessarily would come to pass. That, I don't even know if that was even introduced. There was a discussion draft that we looked at a year or so ago. But again, there's nothing to prevent the state from coming back and imposing the separate tax on short-term rentals.
Correct.
Well, the goal of this, the goal of this agenda item was to give the town the ability and the optionality to make a change to that tax if the commissioners at that point deemed it, deemed it as a, as a good, good thing for the town. And the way that it's currently written, we can't change it. Correct?
Well, we can't, we can change it with a referendum. And there's no, there's no limit on how much we could change it to. The question, my only question is, is 8% the right number? Should it be 6%? Should it be 5%? Should it be 7%? You know, again, if you, if you think about the potential for the state to take independent action and impose a tax on short-term rentals, which they do not have now, you know, you could be creating a situation where you have as, if the state were to match the hotel tax of 8%, you could have potentially a tax on short-term rentals of 16%, 8% for the town and 8% for the state. Should it be something lower than that in terms of what we do? That's my only question.
And that, that will play a role in the success or lack of success of any referendum in all likelihood as well. Right?
So just for point of reference, I'd looked it up, Rehoboth six, and Paul, you had told me this at a previous meeting anyway, and Bethany is seven. And it's always a good idea to kind of think of competition as, because people do kind of pay attention to that.
Well, again, we're coming back to, you know, how do we, is there anything we can do to not limit ourselves? So, and as I read 16715, the accommodation tax rate shall be set at, set from time to time by the commissioners of Dewey Beach. If we were to stop there, but shall not exceed 3% unless approved by referendum, it would give us the ability here to make those changes. No?
The, the charter at section, looks like it's 2316 is where the referendum language appears. And it's reflected also in 16715, but it's the charter that imposes the obligation to have a referendum. The 6715 is where you actually set the rate. The, if you pass a resolution, or excuse me, if you pass a referendum that authorizes you to collect a higher rate than 3%, that's what's available to you. The ordinance is what's required to actually set the rate. So is that, I don't know if that answers your question. You can't amend the ordinance to a rate higher than 3%.
Right.
Yes, so is our thing through this, the bottom line is, this will only happen with the consent of the governor, right? Because of the referendum requirement. And given that, and given the higher of the two neighboring towns is seven, I personally think we should just take a step at this meeting to say that we're going to do a referendum. Let the public weigh in, you know, through the, through the process for 7%. I, there's not an emergency to do it, and I think that you always get better participation if you just do it with the general election. So, you know, we'll just put it on the ballot for September. Unless someone thinks that we have to do it like
I agree. I agree. I'm going to add a little context to this here. So Georgetown did a lodging tax bill, which is Resolution 202018-004. They did this back in June of 2018. You know, to bring context to this is, of course, we got to do a referendum. So we could put whatever number on a referendum, one of two things will happen. It'll pass or it'll fail. I mean, people will vote for it or not vote for it, and the majority rolls on it. But in order for a resolution to pass, we need to make a case of why, why are we raising taxes? And, you know, with, without the state passing something, you know, we don't know what they're going to do. I mean, you know, they could, they could tomorrow morning pass this in the, in the house and then we will, we'll be stuck with our 3% forever because they're going to the goal, what the state wants to do is make it 8%. Well, when I say the state, with the equalization taxes, it says, whether you rent a house or you rent a condo or you rent a hotel room, it doesn't matter to us. You're going to pay an 8% fee and the same 6.11% will apply. So the 6%, you know, we know what that is. And then the 1% towards tourism and the 1% towards the meat replenishment. So, you know, the, the argument is, is why do we, why don't we charge the same for everybody? Versus why do we charge different rates for different things? So we're only, we're one of three states in the country that don't have it. And Delaware's one of the three. And do I think that will be forever? I have my doubts. I mean, if we can't make a good case of why people should vote for it, it's not going to pass. And it's just like any other referendum. So I think by putting in, out for referendum, I mean, we can refer to what Georgetown did in 2018, what other towns have had. I mean, we wouldn't be the only ones. But we're at three and our neighboring towns are at six and seven. If we made our 7.9 and the state passes at eight, well, the state's going to keep 0.1% and we'll keep our 7.9. So we can come up with whatever number we want to ask for in the, in the referendum and it's either a pass or fail.
One aspect of this would be sometime between now and September, this group would take, take into consideration a proposed referendum. There's certain words that need to be put together to express that referendum. I think there's a little bit of effort involved in getting that right. And then at that time, it would also be appropriate for you all as a group to decide what that number should be. I don't think you need to decide that now.
So we can't basically do it now.
I'm sorry?
We can't send the referendum in motion to that.
Well, you could, except you won't, I, I think it's appropriate for you to look at the final product because you can, it could be written in different ways and you might object to, and I've not written one since I've been here or for another client of mine. And I know there's a, there's a, not, I don't want to say science to it. It's, it's not probably that difficult, but I'm a little wary of it. We want to make sure that it is worded correctly. And I don't know what the published publication requirements are. I, I think there are substantial requirements. You know, people need to know that there's a referendum on the ballot in addition to casting their vote for an election. And I don't know how that affects absentee voting and so
Fair enough. Yeah.
Alright, so with that, it sounds like to me that we can't move forward at this particular point in time. We have conversations, there's no path moving forward, which is the goal of that agenda item was to identify the path to move forward.
Yeah, and I think you have the path. It's, it sounds like the path is to link this to your normal election cycle. Although you can change your mind and advance it later on by putting it back on the agenda. And to take into consideration what that number should be as part of the approval of the referendum language when that time comes.
Okay. So with that, do we have a, do we have a motion to?
I don't think you need a motion.
No, no motion to move on?
Table it.
To table it.
Well, I mean, you, you could move to authorize the town manager and myself to begin the process of preparing a referendum to raise the accommodations tax and then the details will be before you again before.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
So move.
From the commissioners.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Not sure what we passed, we passed unanimously. Alright.
Need one minute break.
Alright, number eight, discuss a possible vote on adding changes leading self-committed funding categories and establish a target balance for each. I see this as more as a conversation point. All of you have the financial statements this evening. As part of your package, you will notice that the town of Dewey Beach balance sheet as of December 31st, 2001, on page two, at the bottom captures the, 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 the assigned, the non-spendable, the restricted, as well as the, the assigned funds. I think Commissioner Persinger made a good point in that he doesn't believe that the rainy day fund is actually an assigned fund, is actually an unassigned fund. It will get clarity on that in the auditors. But the attempt here, when you look at currently what is the unassigned funds that the town currently has, is the line item that, that says net income, which is our current name of 286,782, as well as, I'm sorry, that's the unassigned plus the net income of 1,937,741. The point of the conversation today is to look at the assigned funds that we have and whether or not there should be an allocation to those funds out of the unassigned fund. So that, this may be more of a conversation than a decision point this evening because we'll, we'll have to potentially look at what are those, what are the needs in the future. But I'll open up to the commissioners for conversation. Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I, I believe that, I believe strongly that we should allocate some of those funds. The two candidate categories here really are streets and infrastructure and capital improvements. You know, we, we had a long conversation earlier today about the need for a new town hall. So capital improvements is, is clearly a part of, should be part of our, our consideration here. Streets and infrastructure, we just authorized potentially a large expenditure for stormwater management and repairs. And so again, I think that's a big category that we should recognize as well for, for allocations. The other point that I want to make here is that in terms of our fund balance policy, as we go forward, if the current budget numbers, proposed budget numbers for FY23 hold up, we have to, the rainy day fund has to increase by $250,000. And the, the unassigned fund balance, which is really in, in this spreadsheet or in this balance sheet, is really the total of the unassigned fund line and the net income line. That has to be a minimum of $615,000. The rainy day fund requires six months of operating expenditures. The unassigned fund is targeted at 15%. So some of that surplus that we have right now has to go toward funding the rainy day fund and, and maintaining our fundamental balance in the unassigned fund. So I just want to make that clear in terms of understanding what it is we have to allocate to some of those other categories. But from my view, once we have satisfied our rainy day fund requirements at the end of the year and the unassigned fund requirements, I think the remaining money should really be allocated to capital improvements and streets and infrastructure.
Gary, if my, if my quick math is right, you know, if we are to, so if the budget, and maybe this is a conversation we have with, while we, while we, when we go to reviewing the budget and therefore before we approve the budget, also potentially approve the allocations to the, the fund balances. But if, if I, if I understand you correctly, raising the, we'd have to have at least 615,000 in our accounts, plus we end up going to roughly 2,230,000 as the rainy day fund, which means there's roughly a million dollars that, that would be allocated to either the capital improvements or the streets and infrastructure. So the, the one thing that I, I think might be beneficial is we know that we have a town hall coming up in terms of the potential cost of town hall. We, we, if we, if we put all the money in the town hall and don't put it in the streets and infrastructure, we'll be run out of town. So I would, I think we need to have to look at what is the, the plan for streets and infrastructure over the next three or five years and have a proper allocation and that's
So that's, that's a, that's an excellent point. And I was actually going to suggest something kind of along what you're, you're getting at, which is, one is, we need the streets and infrastructure plans over, you know, coming years. We also need to kind of start to have these rough ideas of what a town hall that's going to meet the need is going to cost. How much of that we're going to borrow versus how much we're going to try to spend. And so from my perspective, anything we decided today will end up needing to be completely rethought once we understand what's needed with town hall. So I'd be okay if everybody else is with us just kind of putting these allocations of capital, for lack of accounts aside, until we have an idea accounts aside, until we have an idea of what a new town hall is going to cost. And then we can basically look at everything again and say, what are we going to do? That's just my kind of thought.
Any other conversation? So go ahead, Gary.
Well, yeah, I, I tend, I tend to agree with that. I, I don't think there's uh anything to prevent us from reallocating those funds even after the end of the fiscal year. Um, all of that surplus would still get carried forward as uh part of the unassigned fund. And Bill, correct, uh, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Uh, but I think they, they would all remain as part of the unassigned fund as a year end amount. And then we would still be free even after the beginning of the fiscal year. If it takes that long to get an understanding of how much it's going to cost us to build a town hall, we'd still be free after the end of fiscal year to reallocate that money.
Uh, that is correct. That is correct. I mean, i- this is not a, it's not something that we have to do today, but I think now that we have a pretty good handle of where the balances are and we're starting to get a handle on some of the upcoming costs, just something for us to, to keep in the back of our mind. Okay. All right, so we're gonna, that was a discussion and we'll move on to the next uh item on the agenda, uh, which is to discuss the change of FEMA flood insurance rating as it relates to both the stormwater infrastructure and the climate change committee. Um, I'm potentially going to ask uh one of our town officials to uh correct me what, if I'm wrong on this, but I received a letter in December 13th. And this is more informational than uh obviously there's no action needs to be taken. Uh, and that the, the, the letter, which is up on our site, uh, has basically said that the CRS or Community Rating System that is managed by net, the National Flood Insurance Program um ha- has downgraded us um in terms of us, in terms of the actions that we are taking in, in town or things that we've done in town. And it's my understanding from um uh from, from the town itself is that there's somewhat of a moving target here. And that while this letter may indicate that uh there's been a, that, that the home mode is insurance, uh flood insurance may go up, that does not appear to be the case uh completely. So uh, I don't know, Dawn, from a, do you have anything that you want to comment on this letter that's up there for the town? Sure, can you come up to the, the mic please? I think mostly, is there, like, I think most of the citizens are going to, just want to know if this affects them, how it's affecting and from a town perspective, is, is there anything that we can do?
Okay, um, Dawn Hanks, building official. Um, this particular letter that was sent out was due to a recertification uh by the CRS, Community Rating System. It's a sister, so somewhat of a sister company to FEMA, which the town is legally obligated to uh adhere to the National Flood Insurance Program. We have to do it. CRS is voluntary and that's what this letter is all about. It is based on a 641-page document with another 13-page addendum. So with that, to make a long story short, yes, we do have a flooding issue. We here in the town are abiding by the National Flood Insurance Program, which is the safety net that our tenants, I mean, our, our residents need. So I have letters, I have information that I can talk at another point in time to be able to show that with the CRS program, much of the changes and downgrade went down and we had no control over it. It was just in, given to us and said, nope, you don't qualify. So uh at another time with this other committee and so forth, I'd be glad to discuss it, to be able to share the information that I have with them and what can we do or not do when it comes to CRS.
Uh, any questions from the commissioners?
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is what specifically changed? Like where, where did our rating go down? And are there specific things that we could do? Like I, I looking in the letter and it says like elevation certificates, maps, information service. I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand where we went down and is there anything we could do legislatively to get it back up?
Technically, I have the letter that was done, get sent to the town back in 2014 and then the letter that was just received. And just a couple of areas that we are working on. The letter for 2014 talks about how the points were given to the town by the CRS community for becoming part of the Sussex County Hazard Mitigation Program. The town, for some unknown reason, never became part of that program. And so the town at that time was given hundreds of points as credit, which kept the town at a rating of eight.
So we were getting points that we didn't.
That is correct.
We never put that program in place.
That is correct.
Is that, is that a, is that a very difficult program to get into?
That is something that right at this moment, I am working with Joe Thomas, who is the head of the Emergency Operations Program. To get us involved, I've taken several steps already to start this program. It's a workshop that you have to uh go through monthly. And then of course, this particular year is the um update that Sussex County is going to be going through, as well as all the municipalities here on shore, if they're part of that program. And so we have to participate and go through the ropes. And then once the county is approved and we're part of that county program, we're approved also. So that is on the agenda and has already been started.
Okay, so it may take a year, but it'll get done.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the details because they've kept me in the dark some, somewhat with all the exact details.
To be determined, but the bottom line is it's in process.
Yes, yes.
Uh, but one final, and I think Gary, you had one question, but missing in our, in our conversations, the might, the, the potential of monetary change uh is, is minimal in terms of each homeowner's, because it's
Yes.
It's not, it's not a strict five percent. It's, it's a capped out, I think you told me it's like $20.
It depends on the home, where it's located, because the homes that are in the, in our district, in the X flood zone, they do not get a discount at all, whether they want it or not. Because FEMA through the CRS program has said, you're already getting a cheap enough policy or a less expensive policy. And so as a result, it depends on where you are within Dewey. And then second of all, if your home is actually floodplain compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. So that is the safety net that the town actually uh needs to realize. And of course, if you are floodplain compliant with the NFIP, everything about your home is compliant with FEMA. And so therefore your insurance rate should be low anyway or lower as best as possible.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I would just note on um my condominium association's policy, it is specifically noted that we get a 10% discount. And if it went to 5%, it's, it's about $250 for, you know, for a year. So it's not a tremendous amount of money. Um, that said though, I, I think, and you know, I would certainly look to Dawn, particularly with respect to the climate change committee and the work that they do uh to, to help us think through what some uh opportunities are for improving our rating. Um, you know, I've, I've taken a quick look at the more than 600-page document that she referenced earlier and um the 60-some page addendum that, that is more recent. Um, and it, you know, going through that is really daunting. Um, but uh, you know, things like, uh, I mentioned this earlier, uh, increasing the amount of free board, uh, perhaps is something, you know, is a step that the Climate Change Committee might want to recommend. The commissioners may want to consider at some point after having planning and zoning uh review it. But there's probably some other changes, other policy changes that we might, may want to uh consider. Um, and then just one other thing I, I will mention, we, um, we earlier authorized uh uh the encumbrance of a fairly large sum of money for stormwater mitigation. Um, and if you look into the um, the manual that guides the, the CRS rating system, there isn't mentioned in there of, uh, about stormwater uh management and, but there's also the additional consideration of, of environmental impact assessment. And I have no idea how much that kind of thing costs, but I think that sort of thing was specifically excluded uh in the draft contract that we got from RVE. So we may want to take a look at, you know, the value of doing something like that. If we're going to spend a lot of money on stormwater mi- uh mitigation, should we also be considering the, the additional value of some sort of environmental impact assessment? Uh, the impact on water quality, that sort of thing. Um, and we've got a clear tie to the Center for Inland Bays and, and, and doing that is, as we move forward with some of these projects. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an unclear issue. I think it's something we need to be worried about. And again, we would uh certainly have to look to Dawn to, to help us through that process.
Agreed. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. All right, let's uh move on and to uh, uh, discuss the pending property tax reassessment and potential impact on Dewey Beach. Um, there is a document on the web that you can look at. Um, as I, I think most people know that the, that the state or the, the county in specific is going through a reassessment process. Um, if you look at your currently property tax bill and whatever value they have on your home, it's going to be reassessed. Especially for us in Dewey Beach, that number is going to obviously go up as we've seen the, the transfer tax and the, the whole value of the homes go up. Um, I believe what, what I've read or what I uh listened to, that by law, the county can't raise their total revenue that they receive as part of the property tax more than 15%. So it's, it's just going to, your rates are going to go down, but the value that you're multiplying is going to go up. Uh, this will apparently happen in the 2024 as they'll be spending the next two years doing the reassessment program uh for all 180,000 parcels that they have on, on uh, on uh, on, on their records. Um, like I said, if you, you go to our site, the website, you can see the document that has that and gives you a little bit more detail. And any other commissioner want to make a comment on that? Okay. Uh, next item is review the proposed 20 fiscal year 2023 draft budget. Uh, there's a copy of the budget uh that's been put out. I want to uh recognize the fact that Commissioner Persinger had commented on uh the timing and the elements. I don't think that uh we need to uh approve anything this evening. But you know, if there, any commissioners want to make a comment or uh ask for any additional analysis for the next meeting, um, you know, we, please do so either as part of this meeting and or uh as part of request to Sheena in terms of uh documentation. So I'll throw it out to the floor to say, is there any conversation around the proposed budget uh that was put on the website? Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, just, just quickly, uh, one of the things that we have lost in the proposed budget and uh also in the, the current financial reports is the 5% set aside of transfer taxes to the brown, brown investment. Um, that, this was formerly the transfer tax recruitment account. We made some changes back in May of this year. Um, and uh that's when we approved the fund balance policy. And as part of the fund balance policy, there was a commitment to continue that, that 5% um commitment of transfer taxes to brown investment. Um, largely, I think to, to recognize that there is, as the budget goes up, there is a need to grow that rainy day fund. We talked about that a little bit earlier. So I want to make note of that. Um, I, I really think it should be included in the current financial reports because we did not make a budget change. Um, in, in one sense, it doesn't really make any difference because it's going to e- end up in the, the surplus anyway and then, and then get reallocated. But again, I think, you know, it's something not to lose track of and, and we may want to have some further discussion about.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Persinger, we can absolutely have further conversations on that. I have no problem asking Sheena to put that back in the budget. But my understanding is that all the other set aside accounts are set aside to go into a particular fund and are that to, to have that number increase. And I thought that the transfer tax recoup was about, again, increasing the rainy day fund, potentially. The rainy day fund's already set at the max. So then why would we want to keep putting money into the fund?
Well, I don't, I, again, the rainy day fund, I don't think is a max. I think that's a minimum requirement. Um, and as I said, there, there should be recognition that that fund has to grow as the budget grows. So we're, we're going to move this current fiscal year from 1.8 million dollars to over $2 million in that rainy day fund. Um, you know, and thi- this would be a contribution toward that. It, it's not a major point, uh, you know, I don't want to belabor it. Um, I just want to make, make note that we have, have changed that, we made that change or potentially made that change.
Okay.
So, um, the only, I guess, question, we, I feel like almost we should either be doing a deep dive or, or keeping it up. But um, I know a lot of things we've talked about increasing in terms of increased staff that we've authorized, as well as the raised program and stuff. So I understand why a lot of these are going up. And then the, the uh, the hotel tax set asides make the budget look higher because it kind of shows up as a number in the budget. But um, the seasonal aspect of code enforcement going from a couple of years ago being, you know, 50, 60, 70, to this past year, 85, then going to 140. I didn't know if there was any like big plan behind that or anything in terms of the, the, the people we get over the summer doing that.
A part of that was the UT2 system that, that we purchased.
Okay.
Um, and then the other part is that we're raising their salaries up to $16 an hour.
Okay.
So are you, uh, David, you referring to line zero, six, zero, three, zero, three, zero, zero?
No, I'm referring to six, zero, five, zero, three hundred.
Yes, please.
I see it.
Commissioner Jazinski, the numbers you're looking at in prior years were the actuals. This year, um, we're budgeting, we are hoping to be able to get 14 people to work out in the field. Um, in the past, the actuals are much lower than we had budgeted because we couldn't get the staff.
Oh, so 14 people, 10,000 apiece, 140,000 dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You don't have every single fact in your head.
All right, um, any other conversation right now concerning the budget? Okay, so why don't the commissioners review the budget? Uh, any questions you may have, please send them to Sheena and then so collect those, those comments and, and hopefully we'll have a report back uh as a collective response on that. Okay. Uh, review of, moving on, number 12, review December 2021 financials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the month of December, a couple of things I want to point out, $5,300 approximately uh from items that we sold at an auction in Merhobet, that'll be split between the PD, town hall, maintenance. A majority of that was from the tractor that, that we sold. Uh, revenue brought in for the month for rental licenses is about a thousand dollars. And for a business license, commercial license, they were about $3,000. Transfer tax was 139, combination tax was 51, continues to be higher than projected. Beautification um is a little higher, but that's because we did the Bellevue project down at the end of the Oceanside. And um, we will, the money that we put out is going to be donated back to us by the residents. One resident in particular on Bellevue Street who is paying for that project. So we will be receiving that back in donation. Street and lights, um, this is part of the, the project that's happening out on Route One. We got our, our first bill in on that, that's $28,000. Fifty, uh, 35,000 of that was already approved by the, the commissioners. Uh, there was some work done in the code enforcement building, it wasn't really work, I should say. We had um air quality tests done in there at the request of the uh employees. That was um about $2,500. That will be reimbursed in ARPA funds. And to give you a breakdown of our ARPA funds, um, approximately $78,000 was done on the personnel. The Reed Street project, which has been approved for the outfall, that's approximately 27,000. The heat and air that we spent for this building and for the uh, uh, this building with the um UV light put on it and also over on uh, on the town hall, on the heat and air system there also with UV light um is, is about $20,000 altogether when we add this up. And then the, including the uh, the generator that's been approved for the pump station. So when you add those up, you come to approximately 113,000 dollars out of the 214 uh that we're going to be given on the ARPA funds, which leaves us approximately $100,000, uh, of ARPA funds left.
Any questions from the commissioners? Not seeing any? Nice job, guys. Um, all right, moving on to number 13, town manager comments.
Real quick, the Starbird has put in an application for its, uh, opening party. We will be voting on that on, uh, February, during our February meeting, because it is an expansion of premises. Right now, that's the way the, uh, the code is written, or what the ordinance is written, that any time there's an expansion of premises, it has to come before you. Um, they're finishing out the dirt removal out on Route 1 on the Central Island project, will be finished down to, uh, Salisbury Street on Monday or Tuesday. The posts will start going in. These posts are going to take a little while to put in, because they have to be breakaway posts. So, these are the posts that the ropes will go in between. It just can't be a, a, a big post going into the ground. They have to be breakaway in case a car hits them, so they snap off and, and there's not as many problems.
That's helpful.
Yeah, so that, so that'll could be continued to work. Once they start the post going in, it'll be two to three weeks to get all the posts in. Uh, I went over the ARPA funds, and then also they've changed the rules on the ARPA funding, um, to allow, and I'm waiting for the lawyers to confirm in writing, but verbally they gave me the approval for us, if the commissioners approve it. Um, I'm coming in front of you for the antennas and the camera systems for the town, uh, that need to be replaced by ADT, who had, currently has the system. It's going to be approximately $30,000. When, when they, when ARPA changed some of the rules, um, about two weeks ago, verbally they, uh, they gave me permission to to go ahead, and I said, well, I want it in writing, so I'm waiting for them to get back to me on, on writing. I'd like to point out that, that Ashley was awarded a $100 scholarship uh, for, for papers she had written, and she can use that to, uh, for classes online. We also are working on a grant at this time, for the $478,000 for the, uh, infrastructure projects on Bayard and on McKinley Street. We're working currently, it's a, it's a grant with the US Department of Commerce and Economic Development Administration. We currently have a vendor that's helping us, uh, draft, uh, the grant for that. The, the, the thing will be, if we do get the grant, the town has to put up 20% of it. So, if we get the 478, the town's got to put up 98,000, uh, of that. So, if we do get it, it'll be a huge win, uh, for the town. See, capital expenditures, um, I've got capital expenditures. I have a list of, of items that I'm looking at, uh, about $122,000 worth. Uh, one of would be a police vehicle, that's if we don't get the loan from the county for it. Uh, that was 50,000. A sweep street, uh, a sweep brush box for the front of our Kubota. It sweeps it up, puts it into the box, and then you take the box and you dump it, uh, into the back of a dump truck. We could use that to really clean our streets after storms and with the sand that comes down off the bay. Uh, a salt spreader. Today, we had some issues that the town's never had the experience for. There was a lot of ice on some of the streets, and I got calls from a couple of different folks, including uh, the Hyatt down there, that it was very icy. So, Rehoboth, uh, Mike Peterman down there's come through again. He let us use their salt truck to actually salt some of the streets down here. So, thank you, Rehoboth, on that. Um, heat and air maintenance, I just put 70, uh, 7,500 in case something should come up with one of the systems that we've put in. And, um, a, a possible vehicle for our building official. So, Dawn, right now, when she's out driving around, checking on, uh, all the different building and what's going on in town, she is driving and, and doing that herself. So, I'm just looking at that with a vehicle through the, uh, through the state contract. Um, also, uh, the county has, uh, uh, some leftover revenue. Towns will get anywhere between 100,000 and 500,000, depending on their year-round population. So, we'll get somewhere around 112,000 to 114,000. Some of the larger towns like Milford, Harrington, Seaford will get 500,000. That will come in sometime in, in the spring, uh, early summer.
Is that a defend, is that definite?
Yes, it's, it's, it's definite. Uh, there's going to be a, there's going to be a, a, a letter that comes out. I have to respond to the letter, certifying how many people we have in town, what the needs will, you know, what do we be using it on. Infrastructure is one of the things that we can use that money on, if we decide to. And, um, the Reed Street project, uh, which, uh, Remington, Vernick, where they're waiting for Denrec to come back with the approval on the permit, so they can get out there and start digging that out. And a special thanks to Sheena, Ashley, and Kate for all the work, uh, over the past week.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any. Uh, back down to commissioner comments, Commissioner Paul Bauer.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I guess I got, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Chief, I, I, I apologize. That's my fault completely.
No, you're in the bottom of my table. No problem, Mr. Mayor. I know it's been a long one. Um, on behalf of the men and, uh, women of Dewey PD, we'd like to thank you all for, for the, uh, giving the attention for the salaries, uh, today. We really appreciate it. Um, and plus, uh, you guys had some great comments, uh, at the workshop on the new building, as far as the police. If, if, it, maybe when the numbers get down, I know some departments are very, um, strict on visitors, but if any of you have any questions, or you'd like to do like the mayor did, and go tour a facility to, to understand what, you know, when we're talking about a Sally Port, what one looks like, or how it works, I, I, let me know, and maybe we can take a field trip, uh, if there's any interest, and, and kind of give you guys some more information, if you'd like. Um, but I think we had a real productive day. We look forward to continue working with you. And if you have any questions in the meantime, um, you know, feel free to get up with me offline, and, and I'll do my best to, to answer, you know, any of your questions.
Thank you, chief.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Bauer? You're muted. Was this your first time?
Still muted. All right, there you go, I'm unmuted. Sorry about that. Yeah, a long one today, and, uh, I'm, you know, I think we got a lot accomplished, and, and I'm, uh, really happy and appreciative of all the work our, our town staff does, and glad we could get them, uh, you know, so, some extra money in their pocket to, uh, you know, keep doing a great job that they're doing. Uh, you know, I think we, we, you know, as we're looking at revenue, there's, you know, there's a lot of these grants that, uh, you know, that we're actively pursuing, and uh, we just want to try to make the town better, and we want to try to use, uh, you know, federal, state, or county money, uh, wherever possible. So, we're going to continue looking at these things and, uh, you know, keep a, keep a good positive trend going. So, uh, yeah, thanks to everybody that's, uh, you know, been involved in, in helping this, uh, work out, especially Ashley, uh, with this grant writing, so. That's it, that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Givens?
To build off some of what Doc, uh, Commissioner Bauer said, um, I was at a SCAT meeting the other day, and the state treasurer, and y'all may already know this, but I'm still learning, so if I'm telling you stuff, you know, just cut me off. But the state treasurer says that the state's, uh, AAA rating can be used to help towns with lending issues, so we can, we can lean on that rating. And she also said that the state offers deferred compensation plan that can be used by towns for their employees. So, those are two, I didn't know this before, so I thought I would bring it here. The other thing, um, and again, I'm not sure if this is the proper form for it, but I have become fascinated with electrical charging stations, and as far as I know, in Dewey Beach, the only one we have is in the ground floor of the Hyatt building. Um, I found out from Mayor Stan Mills in Rehoboth, that they got their charging stations through a grant with the University of Delaware, came at no cost to them. And I found out from, um, Mayor Rosemary Hardeman in Bethany, that they are using the Electric Vehicle Institute, which is the same thing that Ocean City, Maryland uses. They got a contract for eight chargers. There was no fee to the town, and includes a five-year maintenance plan, and they're EV1 Level 2 chargers. So.
Great meeting.
Um, yeah, and they fed me too.
Wonderful. Um, Commissioner Jazinski?
I've been talking a lot today. I don't have anything else to say.
Commissioner, Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, I think I've heard enough of the sound of my own voice for today. Thank you.
All right, uh, and fine, Mayor William Stevens. Look, I want to, uh, you know, thank everybody. I apologize for putting, uh, 15 items on the agenda. Um, you, you know, my goal is to, to try to keep this as fit, as efficient as possible, but I do think we got a lot done today. Um, hopefully, it'll be, uh, more efficient meetings in the future. Um, I'd also ask that, um, you know, to take a look at the financial statements that were presented, um, as well as there's some supporting documentation to look at the beginning and ending of the fund balances. We're going to continue to improve that. But if you have any suggestions or questions, and it, our, our goal is to, again, make it, uh, easier for everyone to, uh, understand. And, uh, the, I just also wanted to, uh, pass on our condolences. We lost a, uh, prior commissioner, uh, this, this past week, uh, Jim Bracken. Um, and so, our, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Uh, if there are no comments, do I have a motion?
He was a great man. Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we please adjourn.
Okay, adjourn, motion to adjourn. It's been a long meeting.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor? All right, thanks, guys. All right, thanks, everybody. Are we off?
I'm sorry.
So, I, where, where are those crushes? It's Friday night.